Good evening. The July 22 meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Hidakaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris is online today. Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Saffordan.
Councilmember Revell.
Here.
And Councilmember Reed. Mayor Bis.
Here. We have a quorum and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on our agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. Two quick, two items. First of all, my understanding from our IT folks is that the experience that individuals are having on Channel 16 at this time is a little bit spotty. And so I would just recommend that anyone who's having trouble watching at home on Channel 16, try to utilize the City of Evanston's YouTube channel live feed, which my understanding is working properly. The second item is a sad item to share. I got a call this morning from Dr. Jilo Kwesi Logan, who many of you know, letting me know that his father had passed away just in the last few days. His father was Police Chief Bill Logan, a real trailblazer here at the City of Evanston, our first African-American police chief. I have actually comments here from Chief Stewart, very touching comments, in which she mentions, among many other things, that he broke barriers and opened a door that she herself was able to walk through 35 years after his retirement. The barriers that he broke at the Evanston Police Department were far from the only trails that he blazed in this community, starting with his status as the first black captain of the ETS football team quite a few years ago, and continuing through any number of different forms of service at ETS, both before and after his time at the Police Department, as service as a veteran in the Korean War, and just a real active, active beloved leader in the community. And obviously, that vision of service and giving is one that stays strong in that family. And I just know that everyone up here and everyone across Evanston will join me in keeping Chief Logan in our thoughts and surrounding his family with love and appreciation and affection and admiration in this, in this time of challenge and pain for them. That concludes my announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager's public announcements.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Clerk Mendoza. I have just one announcement. I'd like to share some great news. The City of Evanston has received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year 2024 Budget, with particular acknowledgement for performance measures. The GFOA award is a national recognition out of over 1,700 communities across the nation, acknowledged each year with the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Only 20 or 30 of those communities out of the 1,700 are honored with this particular recognition. Performance measures must emphasize results and achievements rather than inputs and should be closely tied to the department's goals and objectives. This GFOA award reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity has to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves in the following areas: policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and communications. Just want to take a moment to say thank you to our CFO, Hitesh Tasi, Clayton Black, our Budget Manager, Teji Kerr in the City Manager's Office, and other staff members who helped contribute to this award. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you to the team for your important and terrific work on this front. The next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I have several announcements, but first I wanted to give the opportunity to our new deputy city clerks to come up and introduce themselves. Jesse Arce and Sabrina Tamora.
Good evening, honorable members of the City of Evanston Council, Mayor, City Manager, and City Clerk. My name is Jesse Arce, and I am proud, I am proud to introduce myself as one of your deputy city clerks. As a clerk with 10 years of service working for a clerk's office, I take pride in applying my knowledge and skills to ensure the smooth operation of the department. My passion lies in helping others, and I am truly honored to be part of the City of Evanston.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza, and Honorable Council, Honorable Members of City Council. My name is Sabrina. First and foremost, thank you for giving the heads up standing up here, otherwise I'd be even more nervous. So prior to working for the City of Evanston, I was an intern at the State of Oakland, California, also served for the California State Assembly, and also worked in law firms. So I hope to leverage my prior experiences and to contribute meaningfully to the City of Evanston and to better, to the lives, by the better quality lives of the residents. And on top, on top of that, I aspire to grow professionally with Evanston's thriving and diverse communities. So as a first-generation Taiwanese American, I'm very thrilled and honored for this opportunity. So thank you, City of Evanston, for allowing me the opportunity, as an Asian minority woman, to be serving the public sector and to be a public servant. I'm very looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you. Hitesh Tasi. 谢谢大家。ありがとうざいました. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And it's, we've been together for less than a month, and it's been really fun already. So thank you and welcome to the team. I wanted to make an announcement. So petition circulation for the City of Evanston's municipal consolidated primary election begins on July 30, 2024, and the filing deadlines for the election would be October 21st, would be the first day to file petitions for the consolidated primary election, and October 28, 2024 would be the last day to file petitions for the consolidated primary elections. We hope to have a landing page on the City of Evanston's website, on the Clerks tab, with more information about the municipal election. And I know that some people will have questions about ranked choice voting and if we're going to be able to implement that. But as of now, I do not believe we'll be able to implement ranked choice voting, so I am providing the primary date, election date, as a, as a deadline for people to turn in their petitions. So please look at our website for more information. And we do have a page on there where you can sign up to receive more information. So Google Form, you can put in your basic information. You don't have to tell us what office you want to run for, but we will email you information as it becomes available. For, as of now, only the abbreviated calendar for the 2025 consolidated primary election and the 2025 consolidated, consolidated election calendars are posted on the State Board of Elections website. I did speak to the State Board of Elections today, and they said they were hopeful about being able to publish both the candidate's guide and the election elected official guide, which has made it very difficult for my office to provide information, because we do not have an election elected official guide as of yet. They hope to be able to publish those guides before the 30th of July. But when they become available, if you do sign up for information from our office, we will email you the, the guides directly. That's all. We also did receive plenty of email, public comment. I think I've taken enough time. It's all in your inboxes, and those are also published as well. So continue on.
Just quickly on the first point, I just also want to say a really enthusiastic welcome to Jesse and Sabrina both. It's been great to see the Clerk's Office functioning at full strength and with so much enthusiasm. I know that Clerk Mendoza was acting in a relatively superhuman manner for the several months before your arrival, and it's just great to see you join the team. So welcome aboard. Councilmember Reed.
I just also want to welcome you all to the team. I formally served as clerk, and so I have a great admiration for our current clerk and the team that staffs that office. It's really important work, and the Clerk's Office serves as, in my truest belief, the liaison between the people and their government. And so really excited to, to see new folks and see the office at a strength that I could never have imagined. So congratulations. But to that, I do have questions about the filing deadlines that were just shared. And so, one, did I hear you correct that you said that the petitioning period would begin July 30?
Yes. That's, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And then filing deadline would be in October?
Yeah, so from October 21st to 28th.
Okay. My concern with that is those dates have had a long history of, with, with elections. Those dates seem really early. It seems about a month early on each account, and I'm sure even council members who have served for decades have never recalled petitioning starting as early as June, or I'm sorry, July, and filing being October. It's always in November.
Yes, that's correct. There had been some state law changes, which, and just the election, the general election actually is April 1 of 2025, so it's a few days earlier.
April 4 when.
Yeah. But it's just been to some, the explanation that they gave me, it's been to some changes in the state law. And to be honest with you, the abbreviated calendar was also just published, so it's delayed the process for not just us, but the entire state.
Okay. I have not read any new state law, so I will just take you at it for now. But I, my recollection is just that the periods were, I think, 90 days out from the filing deadline, and then the filing deadline was 120 days out from the election.
Yeah.
And so is that still the case, or?
That's still the case. And just keep in mind that the election will be February 25th. Oh, you can, yeah.
I just want to briefly read a little excerpt from the abbreviated calendar of dates for the 2025 elections published by the National State Board of Elections. It, there's a, the following sentence. It says, "The dates in this calendar are calculated in accordance with the provisions of Public Act 103-0586, effective May 3, 2024, and Public Act 103-0600, effective July 1, 2024, which shift the candidate filing periods and related dates for most offices by 28 days." Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. There are, if I'm counting right, exactly 15 people who are seeking to give public comments, so everyone will be given three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up on this yellow sheet to speak in person, beginning with Jerry Garl, who will be followed by Kim Bulba, and then Mark Carlin.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe, City Clerk Mendoza, and members of City Council. I am Jerry Garl, 8th Ward, co-chair with Janet Alexander-Davis of Environmental Justice Evanston, and I'd like to start first with expressing on behalf of Environmental Justice Evanston our sincere condolences to the Logan family, the loss of Chief Logan, and particularly on Dr. Logan, who has been a towering asset to environmental justice in Evanston. I'm actually here tonight to express our strong support for the selection of MKSK to conduct the environmental equity investigation. Our central focus as an organization has been to obtain a clear-eyed look at the root causes of inequities and disparities in living conditions, and to reduce their disproportionate impact on the health and quality of life for low-income, Black, Brown, and all people of color in Evanston. MKSK's previous work demonstrates their ability to conduct an investigation that puts engaging people and listening to their lived experiences first. Environmental Justice Evanston started 10 years ago as a subcommittee of the Environment Board to draft an EJ ordinance, contributed to the 2018 Climate Action and Resilience Plan, and drafted the 2020 EJ resolution. The sharp insights brought by the City Health Department's ePlan report, as well as information we've heard directly from residents through our own listening sessions, have reinforced the need for this investigation. And the timing is right. The current process to prepare Envision Evanston's 2045 Comprehensive General Plan should reference this ongoing environmental equity investigation as important input to future planning and to document in writing the EEI's intended influence on planning, excuse me, even if it's not completed before the Comprehensive General Use, General Plan draft goes to the Land Use Commission later this fall. In addition, I want to say some words of thank you. I'd like to call out members of Environmental Justice Evanston, past and present, for their patience and dedication in pursuing this long-awaited investigation. We are very grateful to Cara Pratt and her staff for their leadership and hard work in eliciting this proposal and their steadfast continuing support for environmental justice. I'd also like to call out Climate Action Evanston, our umbrella organization, for their ongoing support. The Evanston Environment Board, particularly Paula Shoal, its EJ liaison, and Kimberly Holmes-Ross, CEO of Evanston Cradle to Career, who is in the process of developing an expanded EJ coalition for our community. For this 10-year vision to come to fruition, it has truly taken a village. Please approve this contract tonight so we can all get started. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kim Bulba, who will be followed by Mark Carlin, and then, and then Aaron Bornstein.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members and clerk. I'm Kimberly Bulba. I live in the 1800 block of Lake Street. I'm here to make a public comment on the proposal for affordable housing to be located at 1818 Lake Street. Some neighbors joined together to start a petition to request an amendment to the location of the proposal, specifically a change to that location because it is a park, according to the City of Evanston website. We believe that the proposal is moving very quickly and has not allowed a lot of time for input from the community and additional information to move forward with this decision. I did email the petition to all of the City Council members earlier today, and we urge the City Council members to read the petition and provide input as this moves forward. And finally, we would just request more transparency in the process of this particular proposal, how it came to be, and we would also ask that other lots or locations throughout the City of Evanston be considered for this proposal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mark Carlin, who will be followed by Aaron Bornstein, and then Jack Mortel.
Good evening. I'm Mark Carlin from the 9th Ward. I've been up here before. I'm encouraging you to approve the amended ordinance of the RLTO, which is listed as HCDC2 on your agenda. Obviously, this has been a contentious issue, but there has been compromise made, and neither side is completely satisfied with the result, which may be an indication that you've reached an acceptable balance to pass what will be an amendment to the current RLTO. This will bring the RLTO more toward the compliance with the Cook County RLTO ordinance, and I think that would benefit the community of Evanston. And I think it's time to move forward, because I think negotiations have reached a balance, as I said, which makes it acceptable to you and the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Aaron Bornstein, who will be followed by Jack Mortel, and then Jeff
Hello, Council. My name is Aaron Bornstein. I'm a small landlord here in Evanston, and I'm talking today in opposition to the proposed, excuse me, RLTO changes. Although the current changes do not include massive issues like just cause, they do risk unintended consequences, and that's why I recommend voting no. As we get up to speed on, on this 40 pages worth of package as to what's changing, we can already see one of these things is that month-to-month leases will suddenly become a thing of the past in Evanston. So what we've got on this is Section 5-3-6-5 requires landlords to provide a 90-day notice to terminate a lease. So why would a landlord agree to a situation where they have to give 90 days, but the tenant only has to give them 30-day notice? So they're not going to do that. So what we'll do, I would presume, is these leases will then be converted, excuse me, to 90-day, you have to give 90-day notice if you want to break a lease, or if you want to end a month-to-month lease, or what now is a quarterly lease. So I only really use month-to-month leases in special situations, like if I have a quality tenant, and the tenant says to me, I'm buying a house, my job's sending me to California, I don't know the exact date I'm going to be leaving. I say, hey, no problem. Let's, we'll extend your lease on a month-to-month basis, and whenever your, your affairs clarify, you tell me when you're moving out, and you move out, and that's it. Everybody's happy. Obviously, tenants like that arrangement. But now I'll have to tell them, hey, look, City Council says it's 90 days. Why should I do better to you than I treat myself? So on a 90-day thing, they're going to have to double pay rent, they're going to have to pay me while they pay somebody else, their mortgage will kick in, whatever it is, you're, you're, you're eliminating this month-to-month lease. And I don't think that that was really thought through. I don't know that the proponents have, have made that point clear, but that's what's going to happen if it continues as it's proposed. So I recommend a couple ideas to, to clean this up. One, you can make a motion and just remove Section 5-3-6-5 from today's package. Number two, we can ask staff, we can ask the Housing Committee to clarify what they're doing. Do they want to have month-to-month leases? Is this something they want to continue? Or you can just vote the entire package down, which is fine with us. But if you're not intending today to, to eliminate month-to-month leases in Evanston, then there is a little more work that needs to be done, and I hope you'll do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jack Mortel, who will be followed by Jeff Barini, and then Patrick Hughes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jack Mortel, lifelong resident, retired fire captain, currently a resident of Evanston Firefighters Pension Board, and I'm asking to pump the brakes on approving the audit tonight. And just to, so I don't run out of time, I foiled both the 2022 GASP and the 2023 GASP. I have them right here. And on page eight, there's a difference in numbers, one set of numbers, of $76 million. I'm not making that up. It's $76 million. The, the number just below it is $60 million. It's shot through with these types of differences, huge differences. And what I have given you is that a packet that shows Evanston's audit, which is done by Sickage, is done by someone that we pay, done by Sickage, it shows that we, they used 2022 numbers in the 2023 audit. And the audits started with a letter that says, there's two, in two places, that there can, it has to be free of material misstatement. And the second page, you look, on page 68 of the audit, says that December 31, 2022, that's the most recent information available. I think when you look at all, the, the five other cities here, and I gave Mayor Bis another five cities, there's 10 cities that they managed to get the numbers. The numbers must be available. This is a serious, this is a very serious thing. I'm, I will sit with anybody and show them these numbers. $76 million difference, and that's shot through our whole audit. I'm just asking you to pump the brakes, pass it as a draft, so we have a chance to seriously look at this. I'm not making this stuff up. And I, before I go, I'd just like to, being a retired firefighter and working with him, it was 39 years ago today that Marty Leone gave ultimate sacrifice. Thanks, Mart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Barini, who will be followed by Patrick Hughes, and then Dan Skirmerhorn.
Thank you. Jeff Barini, 2nd Ward. Regarding ADA access to the Dog Beach, two weeks ago, you heard from users and residents with mobility issues who had concerns and ideas about the proposed walkway. Some of you expressed your wish that a third option be designed. After that meeting, I wrote to the city, asking for a meeting of the relevant parties outside the strictures of a city council meeting to discuss a third design. I got no reply. Last week, after the open bid had expired, I wrote again requesting such a meeting, asking, not demanding. Last Friday, I did get a reply, but not an answer, only the information that several options would be discussed at tonight's meeting. My request was not just ignored, it was rebuffed. Okay? Why such a fear of talking to residents? Solutions start with dialogue. It's that simple. Two of the possible options on tonight's docket are essentially the original designs with minor variations. The final option, doing nothing, is a nonstarter. I ask that you please direct staff to quickly meet with the Dog Beach Working Group, the ADA resources within the city, and the Smith Group to more fully gather input, discuss needs, and work through a third option that better meets the needs of users with disabilities. One additional thing, I was at the Disability Pride Parade this weekend with my, my son, and among the tables was one from the Attorney General's Office with this pamphlet on accessible parking. Councilmember Kelly has copies to pass along to you, but it says regarding locations, accessible parking must be placed on level pavement on the shortest accessible route to an accessible facility entrance. The handicap parking spaces at Clark Street Beach, which reposed to be used for the Dog Beach, I don't think are either adequate nor legal. Accessible parking for the Dog Beach must be right outside the current entrance. This will require some modification to the boat parking area, but it can be done, and it's yet another reason to send this back for further discussion amongst the relevant parties to come up with a workable solution for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Patrick Hughes, who will be followed by Dan Skirmerhorn, and then Mike Myers.
I'm just curious, have you all gotten a text from Joe Biden? Just kidding. All right. Thank you, everybody. This is regard to the Dog Beach. Well, we're making good strides right now in Evanston, thanks to the leadership, in my opinion, of Audrey Thompson, who helped to include the disability community into the aging in the Commission on Aging. It's a big, big change. It's now the Commission on Aging and Disability. Now disability is being viewed in a healthier way in our community. Our new ADA coordinator, Lauren Ruiz, is doing a fantastic job managing our disability issues in the community. Regarding the Dog Beach, it seems like the economics that has some people nervous, have some people nervous, but the solutions they are proposing are not good, in my opinion, and will cause problems in the future, potentially legal and structural. I wonder why people who use economic reasons feel like, feel okay wasting time and resources of our city staff, who spend great deal of time researching, coming up with, coming up with viable plans for our Dog Beach. I have more to say, but I'll leave that as there. Knowing there was opposition to making the Dog Beach accessible, I brought in a longtime friend who is an ADA coordinator for the Indiana State DNR, and has made the Indiana Dune Steak Park accessible, and he was very happy with our staff's proposal. He's also a quadriplegic and has been 40 years in that position. I just want to say I applaud our city staff for designing a Dog Beach with the full inclusion of people with disabilities into the plan, and I'm frustrated by people who claim economics when they have no problem wasting our city's staff time and resources. That's my opinion. If we add up all that disruption, I would bet, would be all shocked at the true cost the Dog Beach is costing us. I want to specifically thank Laura Biggs and Stephanie Levine for their hard work on this project. I was on the beach May 23 of, I think it was May 23 of 2023, and there was plenty of time for input. And I agree that the parking could have been improved. There's other things that could have been improved, but I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't get how this thing went this way. So I just want to say a big thanks to our staff.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Skirmerhorn, who will be followed by Mike Myers, and then Priscilla Thomas.
Good evening, members of the Council, Mayor Bis, Manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza. I sent comments to you by email today, and, and wanted to speak again on the changes to the RLTO. As Aaron mentioned, there seems to be a, a bit of a issue with the month-to-month leases that can be probably addressed with just a simple amendment to the document that's before you. But in general, we've said over the last couple of years, as we've spoken to the HCDC and the City Council here, you know, landlords and the tenants, 98% of the time work together to get done what needs to be done, whether it's an adjustment to a lease to help somebody who's getting ready to move for a job change or buy a home, or other, other changes that need to be made. And it seems like there are unintended consequences in this set of changes to the RLTO that I don't think this group has thought through thoroughly. As other people have spoken about tonight, you know, the input from those who have experience in the field is invaluable, and I think- and I think that this could be, you know, handled a lot better than it has been. And I'd like to see us look at some of these unintended consequences and see what we can do to continue to make the act of leasing and, and occupying rental property in Evanston a reasonable process that works for everybody. And as far as I'm concerned, and no one's brought up that I've heard, any significant issues that we're trying to fix. So I guess I don't understand what we're trying to change here and what the, uh, the goals are, but, uh, if it's affordable housing, uh, you know, increasing regulation and restrictions just drive up costs and overhead, and therefore rents go up in the process. So again, uh, what, what are we trying to fix? I'm not sure, but this does not seem like the solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Myers, who will be followed by Priscilla Thomas, and then Barbara Cushing.
Hello. Uh, so I'm Mike Myers, longtime resident of Ward One, uh, chairman of the Dog Beach Working Group, reporting to Parks and Rec. Um, I'm here for the dogs. There's like 1,200 of them. And my sister, who has had MS and has been in a wheelchair for most of her adult life, so I know a thing or two about access. We want access. There's no doubt. We want access to the beach as soon as possible. It's not about money. It's not about politics. It's not about us versus them. It's about what's right for people with disabilities, for the mobility challenged. We need it to be direct and simple and easy. Not circuitous, not long, not 300 yards, which is longer than a football field. We need access that is simple, direct, and easy, including parking right next to the Dog Beach. We are pro-access. We want it now. It's not about money. If it costs a lot of money, fine, let's do it. But we need access, and we need it to be simple, easy, and direct. The current plan is not. So that's why I'm here. Happy, uh, Disabilities Pride Month. It's a, it's ironic, but that's what July is. And we want our, our, I don't even think they need to, that they should have a, a dog or a Dog Beach Pass, come out, enjoy the Dog Beach. It's the happiest spot in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Priscilla Thomas, who will be followed by Barbara Cushing, and then Jessica Trujillo.
Hello again. I'm Priscilla Thomas. I live at the Mather. I'm 89 years old, and I go to the Dog Beach every morning. I was there this morning, and it was rush hour at the Dog Beach. I left at 10:30. There were six people, five dogs. We were all coming like this. The existing gate works beautifully. We all waited our turn. We came in, and I'm asking if you keep the gate the way it is, put the A D ramp hopefully on the side, as I understand, it will work so well. It's better for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Barbara Cushing, who will be followed by Jessica Trujillo, and then Ray Friedman.
Hi, I'm Barbara Cushing. Um, I, this is my second dog going, that goes to the Dog Beach. People are happy there, the dogs are happy there. But it has to be a simple entrance to it for the people with disabilities. I, I really opposed to disturbing the nature that is along the side of it and that, that borders Clark Street Beach. But it, the way it is set up right now, except I realize that the, a wheelchair coming down the president ramp would be like, whee! And they'd dump off into the sand. That has to be corrected, but I'm sure that there are easier and ways, there are easy ways to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jessica Trujillo, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
Hello, good evening. Um, my name's Jessica Trujillo. I lived in, uh, I live in the Eighth Ward. I have for eight years, Evanston for 12 years. I have four children attending Evanston schools. I work in Evanston. I came here by way of my then spouse attending Northwestern, um, for a graduate program, and Evanston has been my home, still is. Um, I heard stated in a public comment at the last city council meeting, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I find it ironic to hear these words from a lawyer, real estate developer, and a property owner, who's been consistent in showing up to these meetings and falsely characterizing tenants. I've repeatedly listened to empty, yet maligned, characterizations of troublesome tenants. Um, I've seen a strong representation of landlords at all conversations about these R L T Os. I've not seen tenants showing up and able to tell their stories in the same way. There have been tenants, and there's been some sympathy for their situation. Um, but overall, what I keep hearing are actually, as I hear it, threats from landlords that they will be increasing prices for all tenants if any of these changes go forth. Um, and a lot of empty threats about unintended consequences. What we're asking to pass tonight is already established in other areas. Um, we live next to Chicago, one of the greatest cities in the world, and there's been so much hesitation about taking on these changes. Just causes another issue. I think that absolutely does need to come into play. We're not talking about that tonight. But I think what we have before you all tonight for the changes in the R L T O is absolutely necessary. Um, it doesn't take away any rights from the landlords. It doesn't take away any eviction rights. Um, what it's asking for is giving tenants adequate notice to prepare to move when a lease is not going to be renewed, um, so that they have time to look for places, get together the money they might need to move. Um, and again, I'll go back to the representation here is, I find it, um, rather telling to see that who's being represented here are the landlords, and what that tells me, because I know I've had to pay babysitters to come to meetings to tell my story. I've had to ask friends to watch my kids. I've taken time off to work on matters around this. I've had to take off time of work to find housing, which, you know, lost income. And it seems like landlords and other people representing, um, what they'd like to block for the changes are able to show up consistently for these meetings. I want to know how many tenants know about what's being changed. I guarantee that when asked, they would be in support of what's before you right now, because it does extend tenant rights and protections. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. Ray Friedman, Second Ward. Um, first, I'd like to say thank you to the guys and gals working, uh, with repaving the streets with blacktop employed by City of Evanston. So I just want to say, before winter, uh, truck came around a couple of different days, spreading liquid tar between the cracks on many streets. It appears that after a hard winter and the freeze thaw cycle, that the liquid tar causes some potholes, that the city came and filled with blacktop after winter. Then on May 13th, we hired J A Johnson for a street resurface project for a total of 2.7 million. And whoever gave instruction from Evanston Street Department to J A Johnson to resurface our block and the next block missed several spots. Then after, uh, meeting with two supervisors and our alderman, Chrissy Harris, uh, the Evanston crew, um, of street workers repaved our street and the next block east. They followed my request and ground down a small path in the middle of our street. And during the grinding of the middle of section, they hit a large piece of steel. It turned out, uh, to be a mainline sewer cover, uh, that had been buried under blacktop for several years. Turns out that this was a perfectly good functioning mainline, and the water department, uh, had to come over, raise the cap a couple of inches, and then resurface. Um, great job, Water Department. Great job to our blacktop guys. So it brings me to many questions. Uh, first of all, um, why or how is it that there was a line, a main line buried in the middle of the street that no one knew about? Uh, why did we pay a company 2.7 million and not by any fault of their own, need to have the City of Evanston come back and finish the job? And pay four times for this job to be done on the street? Where's the transparency and accountability you keep talking about? Uh, with three buildings on Wesley, Fountain Square, Robert Crown, James Park, Harley Clark, and spending 2.5 million on rent per year for temporary city hall without any input from residents and more studies consultants? And congratulations to Hitesh, uh, for getting a better rate on the 31.5 million we just borrowed in general obligation bonds. So that should put us around 200 million again owed in general obligation bonds. You know, that's about half of our budget in just general obligation bonds. With P, uh, principal and interest on those bonds only, you know, it's 1.2 million per month.
Thank you very much.
No cause for concern, you think?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That ends the list of people who signed up on the yellow sheet of paper. We now move on to those who signed up online to speak in person, of whom there is just one this evening, Laura Jalif.
Hi, um, I'm an Evanston renter as of four years in the Ninth Ward, and I'm here to cast my support for the amendment package to the R L T O. I think in particular, these amendments regarding, um, the right to cure unpaid rent, including the right time, the one-time right to pay and stay, will serve to protect so many people from having a very difficult life moment turn into an irrevocably, uh, life-changing one. Um, personally, I see a lot of these amendments as steps towards improving the transparency of the rental market. Tenants are asked to bear all credit history, pay stubs, criminal history, rental history, and are often asked to pay a fee to provide this information. Fee transparency is a massive portion of this amendment package that I'm personally really looking forward to see passed. Um, the last thing I want to mention is regarding the number of days a landlord is allowed to legally require a tenant to respond to a proposed lease agreement. So right now, the market moves very quickly. When looking for apartments, you constantly encounter landlords asking if you can move in by the end of the month. Um, and who can blame them? They have a lot of people lining up to take their apartments, especially if they're well-priced. Many landlords, especially the affordable ones, are not looking for tenants who can move in two months from now. Anything longer than the current 45 days being proposed will put more tenants in a situation in which they are being forced to choose between a lease renewal price they absolutely can't afford or rejecting the proposed price without knowing where they will live next. So, um, I urge you not to strip these amendments down any further, um, and to pass them today to protect renters. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. We now move ahead to the online portion, beginning with Amanda Ziem, who will be followed by Mary Rosinsky, and then Michelle Hayes.
My name is Amanda Ziem, and I am a resident of the Second Ward. I'm also a member of the Preservation Commission, although I am not here today in my official capacity as a commissioner. I am in support of an accessible Dog Beach, but not the plan currently proposed. As a preservationer, Preservation Commissioner, if I had a residential project in front of the commission for review of my home in a historic district, I would be expected to recuse myself from the vote due to a conflict of interest. In the case of the Dog Beach Access Project, the city approved its own city project. This is a clear conflict of interest. The city should not approve its own projects, just like I should not vote on a project at my own residence. The city should be held to the same standard as its residents. As you know, the Preservation Commission unanimously opposed this proposal at its special session earlier this month. While this recommendation is not binding, since the project already received a certificate of appropriateness via the city's administrative review, I believe it makes sense to accept the commission's recommendation. I ask that the city council follow the recommendation of the Preservation Commission and explore an alter, an alternate option for all the reasons cited. In addition, I ask that all future city projects, including an alternate, any alternate versions of the Dog Beach Access Project, go through the commission's COA process to avoid any real or perceived conflicts of interest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinsky, who will be followed by Michelle Hayes. It looks like Mary Rosinsky may have some, maybe having some difficulty unmuting, so we'll, uh, for now go on to, uh, Michelle Hayes.
Hello, um, my name is Michelle Hayes. As an Evanston landlord, I am speaking to support the critically important amendments to the R L T O put forward by Evanston Housing for All and other groups. Our neglect of tenants in Evanston is so extreme that our school district may close neighborhood schools. We are losing families every day. I have very little sympathy for my fellow landlords who hoard power and refuse to see the connection between Evanston's unhoused and precariously housed families and the current R L T O. A fifth of our families live below the federal poverty level for a family, and there are only approximately 700 Section 8 certificates available in Evanston, which leaves hundreds of families at the mercy of our R L T O. If you aren't currently aware of how much of a rental housing crisis we have in Evanston, ask any District 65 or 202 social worker, not to mention anyone working with low-income elderly. The current proposal to change the R L T O is a good starting point to address the many injustices against Evanston's tenants. I'd like to see it pass, but I'd like to see even more changes to support tenants in the future. I do not agree with landlords who object to more oversight, as I've seen firsthand terrible, terrible consequences to tenants that our current lack of oversight creates. In addition, as long as landlords can simply not renew a lease, and, uh, the Evanston we know will continue to disappear. I ask you to consider requiring landlords to provide a just cause for non-renewal, meaning that non-renewal either shows that a tenant has gone against the terms of their lease, or in the event that there is no fault by the tenant, the landlord will support the tenant's transition to new housing. Many, many tenants in Evanston have become homeless because of non-renewals, including families with small children. We desperately need to target our support for housing for large, low-income families. In a community where so many live in affluence, abandoning our lower-income neighbors is shameful. I also want to take a moment to express my condolences to the Logan family. I consider Chief Logan and his family friends and mentors. I will miss him terribly, and I am standing here to, to talk to you in part because of the example he set. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinsky.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Uh, sure can.
Thank you very much. Um, I am in the Dog Beach Working Group, and I am also a member of the Parks and Rec Representative on that group. And the working group includes residents of varying ages of, varying ages and varying levels of mobility. Um, I'm proposing, as the group is proposing, that we co-collaborate with the Commission on the Age and Disability and staff to create a plan for ADA-compliant access with parking and the ramp as close to the beach entrance as possible. We've been researching solutions implemented by other communities and obtaining quotes for ramp installations that are secure and commercial. Um, they're costing, one is costing less than $50,000. It could be installed quickly, involves 10 and 12, I think, 24 10-foot piers in it. Anyways, you'll be getting that. But I think it's important that people know, we want the accessibility, we want it safe, we want it for everybody. And I'm, I don't know if Jane, uh, did you get a thing from Jane Hampton to speak? She had sent me a letter she couldn't get on. But the, so if not, I'd like to read what she said. Um, additionally, we, the ramps, I'm sorry, the ramp options, starting at the current beach, is of the proposed $700,000 ramp, ends at the same beach where the $50,000 ramp ends, where the location is. If the water comes up to that level, the beach is basically useless, because it's right by the rocks, there's no sand for the dogs. If that, if the commercial aluminum one temporarily is hurt or has issues, it's easily replaced. So I would recommend also that we look at talking with people from N S R A, which is a North Suburban Special Recreation Association. They've had a couple of suggestions for us. They have extensive resources, and they do a lot of- They have extensive resources, and they do a lot of, there are 10 communities made up of park districts and park boards, and I think it would be really important that we look at that. I'd like to read, in case Jane did not get on, her comments. She says, "I am a resident of the Evanston who suffered a permanent mobility impairment in 2020. Four years ago, I am fortunate that I no longer need a motorized vehicle or a wheelchair." However, she's still in a walker. "The current drawings for the long meandering dog beach may be legally fit by definition of ADA compliant, but in reality, that design ensures I will not be able to get to the dog beach. I do not understand why architectures firm believe that mobility impaired persons wish to meander to their destination. It defies logic. A round trip from a car to that beach is the equivalent of walking two to three football fields," to put this in perspective, "just to arrive at a destination. I cannot walk safely so far. So ADA compliant or not, the proposed ramp is worthless to me. I actually cannot walk that far without risk of fall. Suffice it to say that many mobility impaired citizens who do not have electric vehicles or someone to push them may not be able to use this design at all. This includes the elders who are recovering from temporary issues of knee and hip surgeries and those like me who withstand distance limitations. Whatever happens on the subject, the design must be altered to create ADA compliant." Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for this evening. The next item on the agenda is Special Orders of Business. Is there a motion relative to item SP1?
I'll move item SP1, envision Evanston 2045 update.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that we have a discussion about envision Evanston 2045 update. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. I think we're going to begin with a presentation from staff.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, members of the city council. If you could just give us one minute to pull up the slide deck here. Thank you. All right, so exciting night. We want to give just a quick update on some public engagement that happened over the last week and some observations and bold steps that we're hoping to get some feedback on this evening and then also next steps as we move forward in this process. So I want to preface this by saying I spent a week with a bunch of urban planners, so a lot of energy here to bring to this conversation. Between July 15th and 20th, our consultant team were out in the community, talking about the goal statements that we brought forward to city council and the vision statement just a couple of weeks ago. We received additional 331 community members' feedback on those goals. The consultant team was around the community, a lot of really great positive energy around kind of the framing, because that's kind of where we're at in this process is, you know, you build a house, you don't start with the finishes, at least not everybody starts with the finishes. You kind of talk about the footprint that you want to put into place, you start building the walls, and then you add on the details. I would say at this point, we're going from a rough out to actually putting the walls up and adding the detail to the comprehensive plan and zoning code. We also held some additional organizational meetings with Endeavor Health. We also sat down with folks from Northwestern University to kind of understand some of their challenges, some of their needs as they look forward to 2045. And we also held some really robust conversations with community members during some listening sessions on July 18th. So what have we heard? And I'm going to, again, preface this by saying, this is just a start to this conversation. These are not foregone conclusions. We're really interested in kind of sharing what community members have observed and also some potential steps that the city could take as we look at adding the detail for the comprehensive plan and ultimately drafting a zoning code to help implement the vision into the future. So some of the observations are, we're running out of land, and people here in Evanston cannot find housing that meets their needs. And so some of the steps that the city council could consider taking based on this perception and kind of feedback that we're getting from the community is to identify some growth centers and corridors that can help accommodate more people. So these are locations in the community near transit, along major bus routes, that again, will help to support a population base here in the community, recognizing that we have constraints, we can't grow out. So the really only option to help accommodate future population growth here in the community is to look at maybe increasing density. We also are seeing a need to encourage housing choice. So we have many neighborhoods across the community that have diverse fabric of different housing types, but our current rules do not allow those to be built today. So one of the options here to look at for bold steps would be to encourage housing choice by allowing duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes in all neighborhoods across the community. The other big step, which I think there's already been some referrals on this one, is to look at our parking minimums. The goal here would be to house people, not to house cars, by eliminating those parking minimums. Can I get an assist? Thank you. All right, so the next kind of big observation here that, you know, just kind of definitely is disheartening to hear from community members is that families who have lived here for generations are being pushed out, and children who grew up here can't afford to return as adults. A lot of parents have talked about how their kids have gone off to college, and, you know, they would love to be able to come back here to Evanston, but there's just not a mix of housing types that would be able to accommodate their needs, and they just can't afford it at this point in their lives. So one, a couple of strategies here to look at would be to implement an anti-displacement strategy. This helps to keep families and homeowners here in the community, renters in the community for longer than they are able to currently under our existing framework. And also, again, increasing density within those identified growth centers or corridors to help increase our tax base. Again, as we do not allow any development to occur here in the community, you do have a limited pool of resources, and as our costs and service deliveries increase, you know, there is demand here on our tax base. And one strategy would be to add to that tax base in order to, again, meet our needs from a service delivery standpoint. Next slide. Thank you. All right, one of the other, the next one is that we have a rich fabric of people here in the community, but we do not have enough spaces and places for them to experience fun, joy, and happiness. I think that, you know, I spent my Saturday at the beach. It was wonderful. I think what this goal and this observation is really to talk about is that we need more fun. We need more activities that bring people out of their homes, bring people together, allow us to tap into that rich fabric that we do have here in the community. So some of the recommendations could be identifying locations for mixed-use development that incorporates green space and outdoor dining. Look at closing down streets either temporarily or permanently. This would enhance not only the pedestrian experience, but it also may present some opportunities for people and businesses to call Evanston home, land-based that we don't currently have the ability to develop on. There's also the need to remove barriers and allow more events and arts throughout the community. This is something we heard quite frequently, that it's really difficult to facilitate any type of events here in the community, and people really enjoy when we bring community members together. So this is definitely an opportunity to remove some barriers there. So this one here, our current code is really complicated, and it's really difficult to use, and the approval process is really unpredictable, not only for community members, but also those that choose to invest here in the community. It's been kind of shared with us that it seems like every new development decision is a transaction that's negotiated through the Land Use Commission and city council, and that's just not an environment that is conducive to predictability and also achieving the goals that we all say we want to see achieved. So some of the recommendations would be to streamline the development review process to reduce the time and complexity. Simplify the zoning code by reducing the number of districts. Using illustrations to help communicate ideas. Reduce the number of exceptions to the rules by allowing more uses by right, and then removing unnecessary barriers such as our current regulations. Actually, I'm not joking, are permitted based on the type of silverware that they use. And then I think the last in what we've heard quite a bit from the community is that emerging climate trends are here, and our rules are not aligned to address them. And so we need to act urgently on this to increase opportunities for active transportation, not only to provide alternative means, but also to ensure a healthy community and people. We also need to increase our tree canopy. It is not equitable currently, and we need to do everything to incentivize making sure that it is. We also need to make it easier for people to live here without having a car. I think we're well-positioned to do that. It's just going to take some more investment and thought. And then we also need to make sure that new development is safe and efficient. So next steps, and then I'm happy to open the floor and hear your feedback on these suggestions. We are moving forward in this process. We will be talking during mid-August about some scenarios for different planning options as we look at new zoning regulations at sites across the community. We'll also be having some deep dive conversations on the bold steps and ideas that are outlined here tonight, in addition to any others that do emerge based on public input as we move forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to city council and answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember, oh, that was a, there was, there was some game theory that just happened. I think what happened is Councilmember Hadakides, followed by Nusma, and, Councilmember Hadakides, followed by Nusma.
Well, thank you for the update. I'm really excited to see the type of changes you all have heard about from the community. One of the things I want to speak on, particularly the idea of like the anti-displacement idea. I don't know how many times I've heard from constituents that my kids have moved away, you know, the school systems here are great, they're successful, they want to come back, and they can't. And that's particularly heartbreaking. I am glad that we're looking at this and trying to be bold because we need bold solutions to move forward. I just want me personally to see more things happen here in town. I love the fact that we're looking at it and also wanting to focus on livability and eliminating use of the car. I think there's a lot of people who, myself included, would love to not have to drive everywhere. I think, you know, that if we have safer streets, we'd be more likely to take our bikes and walk. And I also would like to see, like, the expanded use, you know, particularly like in, like our, the south end of town, it would be great if there were, you know, grocery stores that were more walkable. I think, you know, you go to other countries, and that's, you know, you go to the corner store, and you get your groceries, that's just not possible with the way things are zoned now. So excited to see this, excited to like dive deeper into this as we go, but this is a really good start.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a bunch of comments and observations and questions, and I'll get through as much as I can in the time that I have allowed, and whatever I don't have time for now, we can follow up with separately. But thank you to staff and the consultants for the work that you've done so far. I've gotten some good feedback on this process, and I'm happy that we're heading in the right direction here. So going through my list in kind of no particular order, it seems that the message has been received with regards to climate action, environmental justice. I'm pleased that the staff and the consultant is taking this feedback seriously. To what you have already mentioned, I will just throw in another, another item to be aware of as we move forward to an all-electric future. We might be looking at some sort of district heating or cooling network, maybe starting in downtown, but maybe moving out into the neighborhood. So to the extent that zoning and strategic plans take that stuff into account, now would be the time to lay that groundwork. Next item, you mentioned you have met with Northwestern, and, you know, given the significance of Northwestern as a stakeholder in the economic and built environment of Evanston, I just want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to hear from Northwestern as one of our most significant stakeholders, so that when Northwestern inevitably wants to expand or do something different, the homework we've done as part of this process will allow us to proceed with less conflict perhaps than there might have otherwise been. So I think that might mean more than one conversation with just one or two Northwestern folks. I want to encourage that to happen. Number three, I want to talk about downtown Evanston as one of the three council members who represents downtown. I think I'm probably not the only one who wants to make sure that we maintain downtown Evanston and, you know, develop downtown Evanston as a destination, not only for Evanston residents, but for folks visiting from out of town. We need downtown to be warm and welcoming and inviting. We need more customers for business downtown. And for that reason, as well as environmental reasons, I am a proponent of additional residential density downtown, and I would be okay with closing streets. So take that into account, and at least one of the nine council members has gone on record there. I also want to make a distinction between the downtown business district and our neighborhood business districts, which are one of the things I think that make Evanston kind of unique and special. We've got Main Street, we've got Central Street, we've got Noisy Street, we've got the other business districts that are represented in the Evanston Thrives Plan. And so I want to make sure we're maintaining the character of those, of those special business districts and not setting ourselves up for some kind of generic development that would make us look like Glenview or something. You know, we want to maintain a unique identity, and those unique business districts are really where I'm most excited about seeing that continue. What you said about process improvements, yes to all that. You know, let's make Evanston an easier city to work with. And then last but not least, if I still have time, my last question is about timing. When are we going to be able to wrap this all up?
Great question. So we are on track to provide, as we've outlined in the process, a draft plan for our Land Use Commission to review and provide a recommendation later this year. And then in the first quarter of 2025, this would essentially travel to the city council for a decision. So we are still on the timeline that was outlined as part of this RFP process and the contract that was awarded to HDR. It's a sprint, don't get me wrong, but we're on track.
A lot of work and not too terribly long of a time, so I wanted to make sure we continue to be conscientious about stakeholder engagement and identifying stakeholders who need to be involved and going to them to make sure they're part of the conversation. Are we at the city council going to get another status report before we see the final draft?
Absolutely. It has been our plan to come to the city council monthly, every other month, so we will continue to provide these regular updates. We also will be having, as I mentioned, this development scenario workshop in August, and so there will be an opportunity for a certain number of council members, because we can't have a full quorum to participate in that session mid-August if you're available, and I think it would, it's going to be a really fun conversation. We plan to invite members of other boards and commissions, people who are active in the community, and then just the general public as well, will have an invitation to come and participate.
Right, thank you.
Any further comments? Councilmember Reed.
I'll just, is, is-
I'll just, as staff is moving forward and as we're getting to a count of five, I will echo, silently echo what my colleague said. I'm supportive of, I think, everything that Councilmember Nusma and Councilmember Hadakakis shared. And so really, with that in mind, I want to say I appreciate staff for what I feel is a really accurate representation of what I've been hearing from the community for what feels like certainly this last term, but I think even before that, in my own lived experience here in Evanston. So I really appreciate the work that's been done thus far. I was going to ask the question about timeline. That question has been answered. And I do think, I'm thinking about the final report and I'm wondering how, you know, anyone, you know, who's been thinking about this stuff, you know, and just seeing what the feedback is, would make some pretty good assumptions about what the output is going to be. And I do think sooner than later, we just have to start having that conversation because it hasn't been said yet. For example, the, you know, what does it mean to allow for duplexes and triplexes and multifamily units and every zoning classification? You know, we, some might call it the elimination of R1, some might say it's expanding the uses of R1 zoning. But what is, you know, I just don't think we've, I would be pleasantly surprised if this is the feed, if this is what we get. I'd be surprised if we aren't getting some folks who are up in arms and pleasantly surprised if that doesn't happen. But I just do think that we need to start having those conversations sooner than later and just being straightforward about what we're hearing so we can dig into the, the tough part. That maybe isn't going to be as tough. Maybe Evanston can surprise me once again. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Revel.
Well, I'm really pleased that these bold ideas are what you're hearing from the community. So I guess I have to respond to Councilmember Reed to say that it sounds like people are saying they want to see this. You know, the increased general density in our R1 and our two zones. So I am, I've been hoping that that was going to be part of the bold idea, so I'm glad to see that. And I guess the one area where I'm, I haven't given a lot of thought. So it's just interesting that, that our community is saying that, that, you know, basically we are saying we want to increase our population. We want to have a lot more housing because, and this would go to Councilmember Harakas' concerns about, if we have more housing, more of it will be affordable and there will be opportunities then for the kids to come back home after they go off to school. So, and I, and I'm grateful to see that climate action is part of the bold ideas as well. So I think you are on the right track. One, one question about the timeline, timing. So are both the comprehensive plan and the zoning code together coming to us?
Yes, it is the intention for both the comprehensive plan and zoning code to travel concurrently.
Okay, because I guess I would have thought that the, it would take, we'd get the comprehensive plan and then they'd figure out how to make the zoning code implemented, but managing to do both at the same time.
Correct, that was part of the request for proposal ask of the team that was selected for this process was to recommend a plan and then the main implementation tool, which is our zoning code to implement the plan. And, and what we've experienced here in this community in particular is sometimes the plan gets done, but the code never follows. And so there tends to be confusion. I think the downtown plan is an example of that in terms of what governs. And if our rules do not align with the plan, there's that disconnect that occurs. And so that's part of what has been thought through on this process is to make sure that they travel through concurrently.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's really good to know. Thanks.
Councilmember Burns.
Just want to thank staff for all the work on this and the consultants. I think we're headed in the right direction. I like what I heard tonight. My, my first question is, there was an article that, I wasn't able to read it, but mentioned that the preservation, members of the Preservation Commission or Land Use Commission, or maybe both had thoughts about Evanston, envisioned Evanston 2045. So just wondering if, if you can try to summarize feedback that you received from those two bodies.
Sure. So the Historic Preservation Commission did recently receive a presentation from HDR. And, you know, their ask was for more detail. And, you know, I think from everybody's perspective, we're really excited that they're engaged, that they're at the table, that they're leaning into this process, and that's where we're headed next. And so it was kind of, in a lot of ways, gratifying to hear that of like, hey, you know, this is good, but we need the details that go along with it. I think that there's always going to be, you know, when it comes from different groups in the community, they always have their preferences and what they want to see in a process and at the outcome of a process. And what we've been intentional throughout this process is making sure that we're open and receptive to feedback along the way. And so it's intentionally been designed to be iterative so that we're not going in any direction that is a foregone conclusion. We're always coming back and validating with all of the different stakeholder groups in the community, the historic preservation being one of them. I think it's similar sentiments from the Land Use Commission too. It's like, we want more detail, we want to see the substance, we're just not there yet. And I think if we had started with that detail and not come along on this process to develop a vision, the goals, go back, verify this, we probably wouldn't be where we are today. And so again, we really appreciate the engagement, them being at the table, sharing their voice, sharing their perspective, because it'll only make a better plan at the end of the day.
Yeah, and again, unless I misunderstood the, the comments because I didn't read the full article. But in, in one sense, I heard they want, people want more detail. But then I also heard, I think at the same time, people saying we might be going too fast, which those two things seem to conflict with one another. So I think the reality is, we're proud, if you want more detail, then we're probably not going that fast. Because that's, my understanding was that's the next step. It's like, before we provide more detail, we want to make sure that everything that we heard out in the community is accurate, which is like a staple in good organizing, right? It's like you, you want to go back to the community or the group that provided you the feedback to check in and say, hey, did I hear you? So that's pretty, pretty standard best practice in kind of organizing and community engagement. And so I think we're doing a good job in that respect. But I don't think there's any evidence to suggest we're going too fast. If anything, I think we're, we're going at a really good pace right now. The second thing that I want to highlight, and I've talked to you about this in one-on-one meetings, I just want to look at figuring out how we phase out industrial uses, especially industrial, industrial uses that emit kind of noxious odors in areas that are far too close for residential properties. I think this is a great time to do that. From reading, well, I'll, I'll just, I'll end that there. I want to make sure that people with disabilities have had an opportunity to provide feedback in a really significant and direct way. Over the rainbow, I think is, and I'd be happy to try to organize a meeting with the tenants there, as well as there's other facilities and spaces where we can organize this particular group. But I really want to make sure we hear from them. I, one of the things that I talked about a lot early on in this term is, is you hear from people about the property tax burden. I don't think, I, I'm confident we are not going to cut our way to reducing the property tax liability in Evanston. And if somebody says that we are, I would, what you should ask them is, what are we going to cut? Find something in the budget that's a regular budget item that they're willing to cut. And tell them, come out here, come up here and advocate for it. Is it our health department? Is it going to be our youth and young adult development team? Like, what do you want to cut? And so I think the more realistic, and all those things, if we cut them, we're kind of cutting away from what makes Evanston Evanston, right? What we have come to love about being in this city. And so then the question is, what do we do? I think we need to grow. We've been population 75,000 for a very long time. So long that it's, I always know the answer when people ask, oh, how big is your city? I've been saying the same number as long as I've been here. So it's time to grow. And, and so I like the idea about trying to be, figure out where it's most appropriate to grow. And, and we need to continue to lean into that. I've mentioned this before, but I want to reemphasize that I would love to come out of this having a better sense of how many affordable units that we want to develop over a very specified amount of time. So we have to come out of this with clear targets for ourselves, but also clear direction for developers who are spending a lot of money to go through the approval process. And so we should indicate to them exactly what we're looking to build in Evanston. So there's more predictability in that process. And, and then I, I want to make sure that as we're moving along, that we also know how many people are supporting these ideas. We're doing surveys and polls. And so I would say let's try to incorporate that data in these types of presentations moving forward. And I think it's going to be really important that we do that, the more detail we provide. But thank you for your work. That's all.
Councilmember Wen.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Liz, for all of this work. This is really exciting. As you were discussing in the increased density, I was realizing that I live on a block that is designated R1 now that has three duplexes and a multifamily building on it.
Yep.
And, you know, all built before our zoning code. And it's a demonstration that the, a variety of housing types and increased density can live together very harmoniously. So I, I'm very excited to hear more about that. And just briefly, I, I support all of the other comments. I would like to echo Councilmember Nusma's concern about making sure we are careful with our local business districts because they really drive the character of Evanston so much. And so making sure that those don't become necessarily change significantly from what they are now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's the, there are no people requesting to speak at this time, so I'll, I'll grab the mic. First of all, I, I really want to echo the thanks. This is a big project. There's a lot of people on the team, inside the Community Development Department and well beyond it, who've been collaborating. And there's been really a ton of engagement, you know, many thousands of people if you count the surveys, but really many hundreds of people if you just count the events and forums and board meetings. Thanks to folks up here who've discussed this in your board meetings and so forth. So, so just, I recognize that none of this is simple or easy and none of this, even though you did a great job. And if you do pro bono education on this topic, call me later. But you did a great job of condensing it. But I know there's a massive amount that, that went into this. And so I really, I just want to express that. I don't think the outcome would have been comparable in quality if not for that. There's a bunch of exciting stuff here. I do feel like this is a kind of bit of a watershed moment for this project. We've gone from talking about ideas and visions to talking about, in some cases, really quite specific and very ambitious policies. And I, I, I'm, I'm excited to see the breadth and depth of this. So I would just give you a green light for us to continue moving forward with, with everything from my personal standpoint. But it's interesting, there's some things like the talk about density and duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes and height that I think we've heard a lot about from a lot of people. And there's some like closing down streets that maybe if I just, you know, walk around the neighborhood and ask people what they want to see, they don't think of that necessarily. But there are a lot of folks who have mentioned it periodically because they love the festivals that we do have. So I was excited to see that. And there was some stuff that frankly was new to me, but really aligned with what I hear, but maybe phrased in a different way, like this idea that we have such a transactional process. You know, that sort of probably hits us hard up here as, you know, being kind of accused of engaging in a bunch of ad hoc negotiations. But, but it's true and it's fair. And I think, you know, what we want our code to do is to make it really easy to do the stuff that we want and really hard to do the stuff that we don't want. And instead causing, putting both of those categories into a giant bucket of let's make a deal is really both likely to give us development that we don't want and likely to stop development that we do want. And so I think that was a really, a really astute and important observation. I'll just close by echoing my colleagues who've talked about the timing. I think that this had to go, this couldn't go fast, both because of the amount of substantive technical work and because of the importance of the engagement that's been done and that will continue to happen. So I don't think it's gone too slow, but I don't think it's gone too fast either. I think we've, we've really done that work meticulously and carefully and had a tremendous amount of engagement. And we've got room on the calendar still for more engagement. And I, I want to make sure that we stick to that calendar. Just practically speaking, I think it would be a, I'll just be very direct. I think it would, it would not be a full attainment of this council's commitment to the community if we didn't complete this before the next council is sworn in. And so we're on track to do that, which is awesome. We're also not way ahead of schedule. So I think it's important for us to continue the pace as we move forward. And on that point, I guess, I wanted to ask you, now that we're at the point of having more concrete and specific concepts and kind of ready to round the corner and go to the Land Use Commission, would it be helpful already to have referrals that could make their way through the process? Or would you rather that we wait kind of one more beat on that front?
You know, I think we're, we're at that point. You know, if we are going to meet the timeline that the City Council has set out for this process, we really do need kind of more specific direction from the City Council to make sure that as we're having these conversations with the community and going a little bit deeper, that we can focus those conversations a little bit more. We will be having more deep dive conversations in August. But I think as much direction as you all feel comfortable providing at this point in the process, it's appreciated.
Well, in that case, I'll work with colleagues to make some referrals, just so you have legislative items to begin working through the process with. And I think that, that provides an extra layer of transparency and thoroughness as well. So I'd be very happy to help with that.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for all the terrific work.
Thank you.
This concludes the special. Oh, I'm so sorry. I, I apologize. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell Liz before she walked away how appreciative I was of the consideration of the community. It's never going to be enough for Evanston. But I know we've done a really good job in trying to get people engaged in different areas and places. So I just wanted to say a quick thank you for your team and all of the hard work you all put into this.
Thank you, Councilmember. It's been a lot of fun and this community is engaged. And I hope it continues to be engaged as we move towards a final product. So thank you.
Thanks so much. I'm sorry about that. I didn't have my eye on the Zoom screen, Councilmember Harris. We now move ahead to the consent agenda. I'm afraid I have a couple items already, I know need to be pulled. M1, CC1, and A17 all need to be pulled. Are there additional items folks would like to see pulled? Oh, sorry, A13 and A14?
A12, please.
A12?
And does A15 have to be pulled? It's a discussion item. I mean, I don't know.
Oh, sorry. Yep, A15, my bad. Thank you.
And FB1?
FB1. So at this time, we have M1, A12, A13, A14, A15, A17, FB1, and CC1.
HCDC2, please.
HCDC2. If there are no further items, I would entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can you please repeat those for me?
You bet. M1, A12, A13, A14, A15, A17, HCDC2, FB1, and CC1.
I will move the consent agenda lest those are.
I will move the consent agenda unless those items.
Second. Councilmember Newsma moves adoption of the consent agenda except for the following items: A twelve, A thirteen, A fourteen, A fifteen, A seventeen, M one, H C D C two, F B one, and C C one. Councilmember Wen seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Jack Gudis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda with the nine exceptions previously read is adopted. Uh, does someone have a motion relative to item M one?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move item M one, which is approval of city council minutes from May thirteenth, May twenty-eighth, June tenth, June twenty-fourth, and July eighth. And per a a email from Clerk Mendoza earlier this evening, the July eighth minutes have been amended.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves approval of the various meeting minutes listed in the agenda with an amendment made to the July eighth minutes as enumerated in an email sent by Clerk Mendoza at six twenty-two P M. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Jack Gudis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen is out of the room. Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Member Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the minutes are adopted. Now we move to item A twelve. Councilmember Kelly, do you have a motion to make relative to item A twelve?
Sure, I'd like to move item A twelve, resolution forty-five dash R dash twenty-four, approving extended hours for liquor service at Northwestern football games on October fifth and October nineteenth of twenty-four for levy premium.
Second. Councilmember Kelly moves adoption of resolution forty-five dash R dash twenty-four. Councilmember Reed was uh move uh seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Jack Gudis?
I abstain.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Now, Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion to suspend the rules for both items A thirteen and fourteen?
Sure, I'd like to uh make a motion to suspend the rules for items A thirteen and A fourteen.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves suspension of the rules so that both ordinances sixty-two dash O dash twenty-four and sixty-eight dash O dash twenty-four may be introduced and acted upon this evening. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Jack Gudis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion receives the required unanimous majority or unanimous vote, uh, and the rules are suspended so that those two ordinances may be uh may receive final action this evening. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make that motion? Uh, this would be A thirteen and A fourteen for final action.
Okay, I'd like to recommend items A thirteen and A fourteen for final action.
Second.
Second.
Uh, was the second?
Yeah, Reed.
Okay. Councilmember Kelly moves adoption, you know, for for final action of ordinances sixty-two dash O dash twenty-four and sixty-eight dash O dash twenty-four. Councilmember Reed seconds. Again, because of the rule suspension, this is final action in one evening. Uh, is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Jack Gudis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinances sixty-two dash O dash twenty-four and sixty-eight dash twenty dash O dash twenty-four are both passed. Now on item A fifteen, Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion again for, as you pointed out, for discussion, not any particular action by council?
I'd like to move for discussion, um, the, well, it's not the approval of the contract, I'm not sure. The discussion of the Dog Beach access ramp. I had item A fifteen.
Second. Councilmember Kelly moves that we discuss the Dog Beach access project. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Reed. Sorry, uh, we're going to begin with a presentation and then the first person in line afterwards will be Councilmember Reed.
Hello, members of city council. Um, City Manager Stowe, my name is Laura Biggs. I am the city engineer. So um tonight I was here to present on information about the Dog Beach. And I did want to make it clear that um I was directed to provide some options for moving forward. Certainly, I think there's a lot of different ways that we could move forward that are not necessarily bounded by the options presented here. So just as some background, in February twenty-twenty-three, we presented as staff two options, concepts that were developed by our councils, our um consultant Smith group, and they included basically the typical having a switchback, very traditional but protected with armor stone, ADA access to the Dog Beach, where all the infrastructure is contained in the footprint of the existing Dog Beach, and a separate layout, which was brought forth by our consultant as potentially saving the city some funding. Um, it works by having a pathway that works along the natural contour lines so that there is less, uh, far less of a pathway that appears on the Dog Beach footprint, less armor stone, less the pathway within the wave action area as the adjacent beach does not actually see waves. And so staff was protected, was it was um directed to move forward with this second option. Um, but with in addition to ADA access, there are actually a lot of requirements to um operating a dog beach, which is an off-leash dog area regulated by the state of Illinois through um Cook County, which actually administers the regulations. And there's a large variety of regulations, but three that are really critical to our discussion tonight is that it has to be fenced or contained with a sort of dog-proof security fence, not really what it is, but does have to contain dogs. Um, it has to have a double gate where you enter, you um that prevents dogs from rushing through the gate whenever somebody opens it. And the entrance has to be secured in a way that only people who successfully registered their dogs and proven their vaccination status have access. We tried this with a variety of ways. Currently, we only have the ability to have battery power out there, so it's basically a keypad with a code that allows people to get in. There are also other requirements that are more specific just to the um Dog Beach that we've been working on. Uh, the users prefer to have a dog wash area, which is currently provided by a hose bib and a hose essentially to take the sand off their dogs as they leave the beach. There, um, at the time that we showed the options to council, we we were requested to provide a shorter stair entrance in addition to the ADA pathway for people who wish to bypass the ADA pathway. Um, that was true regardless of which option we chose and was also reiterated when we met with various users, including users of the Dog Beach. Uh, there was a request to provide security lighting at the gate. The beaches open park hours are till eleven P M, and there was um concerns about security, but also the ability of people to see the keypad to actually operate the code. And um as we looked at using the adjacent beach for a part of the access to protect the plantings on the adjacent beach. Um, in terms of public engagement, we actually did um not have presentations, but we were back at city council three additional times for approval of change orders that allowed us to pay the consultant to and change their scope of work in order to get the Dog Dog Beach designed. We had a meeting on site with Dog Beach users and representatives from the Commission on Aging and Disabilities. We had three meetings on site with volunteers from the Bird Sanctuary, one staff review for preservation with certificate of appropriateness issued, um, and one meeting with the Preservation Commission. There was a concern by one of the people in public comment that the city should not be approving its own projects. I don't have a comment on that. I will say that what was done was in compliance with the rules that Historic Preservation has published on its site and city staff has complied with for the many years that I've been working for the city. And our current status is, uh, we brought the um Dog Beach contract, the bid to council. Unfortunately, that bid expired. We did reach out to the contractor and ask him to extend the bid. He declined to do so citing cost increases that he had not planned for. And therefore, we are not really able to award the bid at at this time. So options for the Dog Beach access, and this is where I was directed to provide some points, um, options that could we could then build a discussion around. Um, basically, there has been a resident or citizen proposal to put in a structure to provide access that goes perpendicular straight out from the revetment wall um towards the lake. And that structure is largely unprotected with any armor stone. Uh, I really haven't had a lot of discussions about it, but what was forwarded to me. And so that would be an option. We could proceed with what what has also been suggested by various council members and residents, which is we could have a more traditional switchbacks design that is located on the Dog Beach, protected with armor stone. We could rebid the current design. Uh, it is like usually when we do that without changing the scope of work, we do see an increase in cost in bid pricing. Or theoretically, we could provide no access to the Dog Beach, but then we would be out of compliance with ADA law, and we should consider closing the beach. So um, this is the uh, just wanted to provide this so that you could see this is the perpendicular access roughly that was shown to me. There is a, this is via traditional switchback that was recommended by our consultant as an option. So I went through just high level, some of the challenges and advantages of different structures. Uh, the challenges perhaps of the perpendicular unprotected structure, understanding that I haven't really done a formal design or anything. But uh, really, one of the biggest challenges that staff is concerned about is how you would keep such a structure safe if it's not protected. Um, it is the Dog Beach does see significant wave action at certain times. The sand migrates in and out, the water levels change. And so being able to keep something in operation when it is not a protected structure with armor stone is concerning to the staff. Um, it would create liability for the city if it were somehow damaged and we did not deal with it promptly. It also doesn't really, what was shown to me doesn't address all of the other project requirements that relate to Cook County about having a double gated area. And um, the ADA, uh, part of the scope included running an electrical line to the gate so that we could have a new ADA compliant reader. We've had a complaint from somebody with visi- um disability related to visual that they couldn't see the keypad and wanted to go to just like a barcode scanner or a key fob, which we could do, but we need power at the gate. And um, also looking at like the dog wash area, access sidewalks. Those types of um features also we would need to include. We also were concerned about the ability, if this has to be something that is put in service, taken out of service, depending on the time of year. The staff commitment for doing that is pretty significant. We currently do have at the Church Street Boat Ramp, we have a floating dock which does get removed annually. It is the better part of the day and multiple staff from three departments as well as equipment and everything to get that in and out. And that's not something that we could do on a regular basis with our current staffing level. There are significant long-term repair costs and maintenance costs. Um, generally, if you invest less in capital improvement with the idea that the structure is somewhat disposable, but you understand that you might have to replace it more frequently, then you do have to replace it more frequently. And um anytime we were doing this sort of work where we're taking stuff in or out, we would probably have to close the Dog Beach down, which was another criteria that was given to us as we don't want to close the Dog Beach pretty much ever. So there are advantages to this option, though. It does um really, it could, depending on what the actual scope of work is, significantly lower the upfront cost of installing the ADA access. And if some off-the-shelf components are used, if they are damaged, it may be a relatively simple and straightforward thing to go ahead and replace those. So unfortunately, though, um, I don't really have any estimated cost for this because I don't really know the entire scope of work. But you would still need to pay engineering fees in order to have a design done. Uh, you cannot just install things without having a design specific to the environment for this type of work. You'd want it signed off by a professional engineer. Likely, you would have a coastal engineer involved since it would have to be subject to wave action. And there is a permanent application, a joint permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, Illinois Department of Natural Resources and I E P A anytime you do permanent construction on the beach. That is um a process. It is a long review process. It would take time to get that done. We'll say putting in an unprotected structure that um and also is closer to the lake waterline than what the previous structures were. Um, it may be difficult to get that approved through Army Corps and I E P I uh IDNR. They do have some really specific ideas about what they consider to be appropriate for lakefront construction. We also would potentially, since it's a new design, want to redo some stakeholder group meetings. Uh, we would repay for things like um bidding services and permitting. And then we would also have to bid this if it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, so it would take months to get this done. The earliest that I would imagine it could be completed would be next spring or summer. In ter- in terms of the construction costs, that was talking about engineering, the you would still need to do some of the Cook County requirements. You would depend it, the cost would be dependent on the ramp design. And if we wanted to actually include all of the other features that the um current design included, and the schedule for construction would approximately be five to six months if you include bidding time. Um, switching gears to the parallel protected structure, that's that switchback that was built kind of along the revetment wall. There would be significant upfront construction costs. This would be definitely more expensive than what we had designed and put out there because just the sheer volume of armor rock that you need to do when the entire thing is within the area of wave action, it would really um increase the cost. It would also increase the footprint on the Dog Beach, which was something that was originally of concern to Dog Beach users. But uh, it, there wouldn't really be another place to put it if you're not going to impact the adjacent beach. So then there are a lot of advantages to this. It is designed to be operational regardless of if the sand or water level changes. One of the things that was found by the um by the Dog Beach users and was verified when we discussed it with our consultant is originally what we designed for was based on a twenty-twenty-two survey where the drop was six feet that we had to manage. Currently, the sand has shifted so much that it's now more like three and a half feet. But that two, two and a half feet could just go away just as easily. The sand and water levels change at the Dog Beach all the time. And it's it's actually particularly susceptible, more than our normal beaches, to that kind of action. So you would want to make sure, um, if you want to keep it in operation all the time, you really want to make sure you're designing for that kind of condition variability. And um, so that is a benefit of this switchback construction. It would be designed that way, as was our the design that we bid recently. And we would want to design it to be resilient to wave action. It was anticipated to be a fairly low maintenance cost. That was one of the requirements placed by the staff was that we didn't really have the ability to be out there all the time doing stuff and making repairs every year. So we were really hoping to have something that was uh pretty easy to maintain and keep in operation. And so therefore, we estimate it would be less likely to go out of service, potentially forcing a closure of the Dog Beach. We would basically have to redo all of the engineering, though, that we had done up to now, and that would take some substantial time. And the construction costs would likely be higher than the construction bids that we previously received. Um, none of this includes the ADA parking that has also been proposed. But um, and I don't have a price for that. We could also rebid our current design, which has many of the similar um challenges and many of the similar advantages. I will say, though, that this, the, one of the major advantages was just keeping so much of it off of the structure, off of the Dog Beach, really lessened the space that it took up on the Dog Beach and um therefore the worries about how much of it could fail. And therefore, the worries about how much of it could fail. The downside of it was it was an impact to the adjacent beach. We did work to try to work with the Bird Sanctuary volunteers to figure out how we could minimize the impact to the plants that the city installed in 2011 in a way that we could replant them or make sure that the plants had an appropriate habitat and environment. So the estimated cost, we would still have to redo some of the engineering if we want to go back out to bid, even if we don't value engineer it. That could be done fairly quickly. The construction, I would estimate, will probably be slightly more expensive unless we do significant value engineering. And then we could not provide ADA access. That does not comply with the American with Disabilities Act. But, so I would leave up the legal stuff up to our city attorney. But based, I did discuss this with the city's ADA consultant and they recommended that we not have this situation where we are operating a facility without having a similar facility that's ADA accessible. I did look at the ADA parking. There are some really specific requirements for ADA parking. Some of these include that, and, and you can envision this if you've been out in the street or a parking lot and seen parking spaces that are ADA compliant. There's a striped area adjacent to vehicles that are ADA that has to be a minimum of 60 inches wide. This striped area cannot be in a vehicle travel lane. So it can't overlap where vehicles might be driving. It has to have at least one accessible space that is able to be used by a van, which is three feet wider than a typical ADA space. When you serve more than one facility or entrance, you have to disperse your ADA spaces amongst the different entrances that are being served. And you are required to have an accessible route to the entrance. That route can be on a sidewalk, but it doesn't have to be. But it does have to meet certain ADA requirements about being 36 inches wide minimum and having a smooth surface that complies with ADA. Probably the biggest challenge we have in Evanston with our sidewalks and our ADA accessible routes is making sure that there's no changes in level greater than one half of an inch. So just looking at the Church Street Boat Ramp lot. The, believe it or not, this entire thing is the Church Street Boat Ramp lot. And the ADA stuff's like right at the north end, and then we have the Church Street Boat Ramp. The parking for that, the, I don't believe any appreciable construction has been done or maintenance on this lot since 2000-ish. But there is striping out there that's very faded. All of the parking is contained right now in the north half of the lot. There are some spaces that, it's mostly diagonal parking and it's extra long spaces for boat trailers. There are some parallel parking spaces along the east wall. The lot does not have any adjacent concrete sidewalks. And so those may need to be added to create accessible routes. However, because this lot primarily serves the Church Street Boat Ramp, we cannot just put spaces up at the north end. We'd also have to figure out how to distribute spaces so we can serve the Church Street Boat Ramp as well. The pavement condition of the lot is poor. And it by itself could not serve as the accessible route unless there were upgrades made to the pavement condition. Currently, this lot does not have any drainage infrastructure and I've not done an in-depth analysis of this. We might consider patching versus an entire resurface in order to avoid addressing that issue. We would definitely need to be restriping because the, the pavement markings are quite faded. But the ADA spaces would have to be located in such a way that the access space was not, like if you put them right here along this line, and there are some spaces there, the access space would be in the travel lane of the vehicles. Just looking at the travel lane of the vehicles, you can kind of see that's true. That's not legally allowed. So we would really have to think about where the ADA spaces could go. They, with the current lot configuration, they could not go right next to the Dog Beach entrance. There would have to be some engineering thought put into how these are located. I would say that currently this lot is a pay lot. The users pay $378 a year, according to our Parks and Rec friends. And they generate $42,000 a year with that income, which is used to offset some of the costs of the dredging. So if we choose to allow people to park in the lot that are not paying, we have to discuss operationally what does that mean? So in terms of next steps, staff really is open to whatever direction we have moving forward on how to proceed. Certainly do not need to restrict yourselves to the options that I have supplied here. But I do want to have also some guidance on an appropriate level of stakeholder and public engagement. Because I feel like when we talk budgets, we talk a lot about having very specific, limited public engagement that's effective, that reaches the right stakeholder groups. But then it's discreet. And we draw a box around and we say this is the right level of public engagement. But that, the level of public engagement we had on this project would be on the higher end of public engagement that we typically have and yet was not considered adequate. And so I am happy, as is the staff, to do any level of public engagement that the council would like to direct. But I would just like to have a clear understanding what that level is before we go forth with the next steps.
Thank you. That was a, that was a lot of information about a Dog Beach. Council member Reed followed by Burns.
I withdraw.
Council member Burns. Followed by Kelly, followed by Nusma.
The, with all the proposals, once we get members of our community who, let's say, are in a wheelchair, is there, is that the end? Is there an area where they are and then the dogs are running around? Let's say they have a dog, are they, where are they, where are they at on the beach? I would imagine not all wheelchair chairs are able to navigate through the sand. And so it's just a question that popped in my head. How does that?
That's a great question. And I do want to be clear, separating what is legally required versus what we want to do because we want to be good stewards and make spaces accessible. So we are legally required to provide access to the recreational facility. So we're legally required to get people to the beach. We are not necessarily legally required to, to get people, to have ADA accessibility on the beach. But that doesn't mean we don't want to do that. And our Parks and Rec Department, working with city council, has actually installed Mobi mats. Well, actually Public Works installs those, but we, you know, they've reached out and gotten beach wheelchairs. We are, as a community, we're really committed to providing full access. But I think you would see something similar. Once you get to the surface of the beach, because the level of the sand is so variable, staff recommends installing more movable temporary structures such as Mobi mats once you're at the level of the beach. And as long as you're in a reasonably flat area, the Mobi mats work really well. And so that's what we would recommend is having a series of Mobi mats to get people around on wheelchairs.
But we don't have those currently at the Dog Beach.
No, we do not.
Is there a scenario where the ramp can be both perpendicular and protected? I know you were going off of
Yes.
A scenario that was provided to you by members of the community. But moving beyond that idea, is there a perpendicular protected scenario?
There is, but because the level of the water varies so much for the Dog Beach, it would really limit how, how many conditions it remains in service. So generally speaking, whether it is an unprotected or a protected structure, staff would recommend having it back close to the revetment wall, parallel to the water level in order to maximize the length of time and conditions under which it can be in operation.
The, so is it that we, we could go with the current proposal, but the price would change? Or have they withdrawn entirely?
They've withdrawn. We would need to rebid the project.
I just wanted to, because the last time we talked, we just talked about a scenario being that the cost could change. We could still move forward with approving the bid. Or not the bid, but the contract with them, but that the price may change. Now you're saying they've kind of completely withdrawn and we'd have to rebid?
Yes. So again, I, I think our legal counsel or our purchasing group would be better at saying this, but there are a lot of rules about negotiating when you get bids. So the cleanest thing would be to award the bid at whatever price and then do the value engineering. We could do a little bit of discussion upfront, but we wouldn't probably just award a lower cost bid.
When you mentioned keypad for entrance, is that to get, that, that's not to get into the lot. That's to get into the, you were talking about to get into the Dog Beach, right?
Yes, there currently is both a keypad and swipe card.
To get into the lot, right? Yeah, that's what I thought.
To get into the Dog Beach, we have a keypad entrance, but we would like to change that.
Yeah, I think the public engage, the amount of public engagement, in my opinion, was, was, was a good amount. We talked about this briefly at the last meeting, but unless I missed it, honestly, I just, I, I did not hear members of, you know, our community who are, would use a ramp suggest that the ramp was, that the, the route was too long. I literally just started hearing that the last few weeks, which is I've expressed during Call Awards and I'll continue to express. That's what is most compelling to me. It's not cost. It's not all this other stuff I've heard thrown out. It's, we're literally trying to solve a problem for a group. And every member of that group that has came out to speak about this has said it's too far. So to me, that's, it, it requires us to revisit it. I, I support revisiting this to see if there's another option. I do think while we, there might have to, we might have to make some adjustments, which are not completely known now that I feel like there's enough space to figure out ADA parking that's closer to the entrance. It may require, and this is just me talking, as a, not an engineer, but maybe shift in the driveway, maybe enlargening the turnaround, like maybe it, it means something else has to change to accommodate it. But I think it's possible and I don't, I don't think it'll be a, a significant cost compared to, you know, anything else we've, we've looked at. I'm going to hold there, but I, I, those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Kelly, followed by Nusma, followed by Hadekatis.
Thank you. I concur with council member Burns. You know, I think we've heard loud and clear from mobility challenge residents that we really want the most direct, shortest path possible and inclusive. I think that's also very important. And, you know, one person spoke and said, well, the parking's not perfect, but it really is so much about parking. And I think a little bit of the problem started out here with, that the engagement, which I was part of, happened after these two designs were, were, were prepared. And, and that's when, you know, people were giving feedback on those two designs, which is very different than what I'm hoping we can do now is, you know, meeting with community members from both, from users of the Dog Beach who are mobility challenged, as well as from the Commission on Disabilities. I've been coming up with a plan that way as opposed to coming forward with just two plans. Based on what I understand at the time, we had these, you know, we had three ADA parking spaces on the north side of Clark Street Beach. So it, you know, felt like it was about trying to figure that out, although the switchback, I know that did not incorporate the parking plan with that. So I think that's entirely different, right? To have a lot of engagement when you're, you've already figured out two plans. So I would also like to see us, you know, come back with, or at least reach out and work with the community members, both the Dog Beach Working Group and the Commission on Disabilities, to look at creating the shortest, most direct path. And I would say also, I could say inclusive path. And if we have to spend more in broadening the turnabout, if that's necessary, I think we should look at that. We have to look at what's best for our disabled and our mobility challenge users first and foremost. And those spaces at the, at the north end of the ramp of the, I'm sorry, of the boat beach, those are not parking spaces currently. And I go there almost every day to look and see, it's not, I mean, it's, and I understand about the turnaround and the dynamics of that. So, but I'm just saying those particular parking spaces that we're looking at, I don't know if we can look, consider diagonal parking spaces there. To me, I think this evening, the most important thing is, and I'm starting to do it, not to enter too much into design and engineering, but really just to hopefully provide you with some direction, to come back with some, to work with community members, to come back with a shorter, more direct and inclusive path. Again, one that's inclusive, if the Dog Beach is closed, it's closed for everybody. If the water rises, I mean, we have one ramp, then nobody gets on, right? So I think that's, we don't need a separate, a separate ramp that might stay open while another one be closed. I think it's important also just on a psychological, I mean, respectful level that we do create that one ramp. And just, I mean, I know a lot of us were concerned about the length of the ramps and so did hire a McTeague Associate Surveyor, so there's three, you know, explaining what we needed and also a firm that does, a cement firm that has expertise in ADA ramps and 3.5 feet, which would require about 40 feet from the top of ramp is, yeah, okay. So I guess that's where I'm at to hope that we can.
So I do have a question about that, though, because when we say working with the members of the Dog Beach Working Group, really it is the consultants that are providing the design. So are we okay with paying consultants to work with them, which could be a substantial consultant cost? And then whatever you choose to do with the parking lot, some of the changes that you're recommending, we could be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on that lot. Is that also an okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to include the also Smith Group. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we want to get this right for our users. And, and I would say, you know, that is what's right is to have parking. Parking is essential. We can't just say, well, we got parking wrong. And so I think we do have to figure out parking that is adjacent, figure that piece out. So yes, including Smith Group, the Dog Beach Working Group, the, the Commission on Aging. And, you know, it was, I'm looking at this pamphlet from Jeff Barini from this weekend's Disability Pride Parade, and it does say accessible parking must be the shortest accessible route to the facility. It must be installed as close as possible to the, to the facility. So I just think we really need to strive to do that. And, you know, the other price was very high. Maybe this will end up being as high. But I think it would better serve our, our users, our mobility challenged and disabled users to work that out, so.
It would likely be higher, but aside from that. So if we're having this group of people work with the consultant, then we will need to bring back a contract for that. There are multiple ways that we could engage that contract. We've been doing it as a change order to the shoreline stabilization. At some point, we're going to need to stop doing that because we're going to run afoul of our purchasing rules. We're not allowed to change over more than 50% of the cost of the original contract. So we might need to go back out for an RFP, which itself is like a three-month process. So you are suggesting that you would recommend that we engage a new contract for the consultants to develop a design with the Dog Beach Working Group? And, okay.
And the Commission on, on Disabilities as well.
Of course.
I just want to be clear. So we didn't, we just did a change order with Smith Group. We did an RFP. So you're, you're proposing that we would do, do another change order with Smith Group? Is that, or would we do an RFP?
I'll have to, no, we had a request for proposal that Smith Group was the selected consultant based on doing planning and design work and construction oversight of infrastructure in the lakefront zone. And then because there was a desire to move this quicker, although it has not turned out that way, we did a change order because they were, already demonstrated their qualifications to do that kind of work. So we did a change order. However, there are rules about how much change order you can add to a contract. And we are probably getting a little close on those.
Right. So I mean, I certainly wouldn't have any problem doing, I mean, I think we could get a lot of maybe wonderful proposals from others, too. Whether it's a change order with Smith Group or putting it out to bid, I think the important thing is to respect our community, our, our mobility challenge community. And we've heard them and there's space there in that big parking lot. We just have to figure it out. And, you know, to create a shorter, more inclusive path that's direct. So that's what I.
So I also want to be clear that that option will likely take us. So I also want to be clear that that option will likely take us fifteen months to eighteen months. To actually implement at a minimum. So we're not able really to do that kind of thing fast.
Okay, so I know many in the community got a bid from a cement company that does do ADA ramps, so I just want. I mean, I'm not quite clear why, um, we, we were able to get, and I know this wasn't, anyway. Uh, we want it up as soon as possible. I think everybody on the dog beach wants to see this.
I understand, but we also have to, first of all, we're talking about working with the community group to develop a design. And I'm assuming that's going to take more than one meeting. And then we are also talking about. Completing a design that a licensed professional engineer will sign off on and that will be approvable by Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes, I would say let's just get it right. Either way, we're spending a lot of money on this. Let's do it right by, by our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma followed by Hatakakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I want to begin by, uh. Acknowledging the feedback from, uh, the mayor of the dog beach, Mr. Myers. I appreciate your, your input here and the. Volunteer work you've put in, put in on the dog beach. Uh, Mr. Myers, uh, wants us to do this, uh, in a way that's simple, easy and direct. I don't know about direct, but simple and easy are just not part of the equation when you're talking about construction on, on a beach. I was thinking about this last week on the beach on Lake Michigan. Uh, where my family has, uh, you know, spent some time over the summer for the last twenty years. And I was. Thinking about this issue as I was watching my kids and their cousins, you know, play out in the waves, sitting on my beach chair there on the sand. Um, five years ago, that beach chair would have been three feet underwater. Six years ago, it might have been three inches underwater. Four years ago, it might have been a foot and a half underwater. When you're dealing with Lake Michigan, uh, it's not simple because the beach moves. Uh, the water level rises, uh, the sand moves around even if the, the water. Level doesn't rise. And you can see this for yourself, standing on the dog beach, if the wind blows in a different direction, you know. Right there in front of your eyes, you can see, uh, you, you can see the water, the depth of the water change. Um, and so simple and easy is just not gonna happen. If you're do, if you want to do something right, that, uh, is. Built to withstand the test of time and does not need continuous and regular, you know, maintenance. Um, and, you know, significant maintenance on a yearly basis. So the more you spend upfront, if you're spending it right, you're gonna save maintenance costs down the street. Um, I'm glad that there seems to be a consensus, uh, you know, unanimous consensus that we. Want to make the beach ADA compliant. Um, we're all in agreement on that. Uh, cause if we weren't, we'd be, it wouldn't be the right thing to do and we would be opening ourselves up to hundreds of thousands of. Of dollars of legal liability. Uh, I'm a little bit taken aback that there seems to be a damn the expense, uh, let's just get it done. Attitude because, I mean, come on, this is expensive and I, we need to be, uh, very mindful of. Uh, expenses as a city council for this dog beach and for everything else we do. Um, for that reason, when we were putting together the budget for, uh, this year, I said, you know what? Four hundred thousand dollars for a dog area at Gray Park. Across from Albany Care at Maine and, and Ridge, four hundred thousand dollars is crazy. It's a fence. Let's keep it simple. We put two hundred thousand dollars in the budget. Um, this project was budgeted at five hundred thousand dollars and, um. We knew it was gonna be expensive. We don't seem to be hung up on the expense. In terms of where we go from now, uh, uh, where, where, where we go from here. Uh, I don't think going back to the drawing board is very likely to result in anything that's substantially different. Uh, as long as we, you know, hold ourselves accountable to meeting the design criteria that we, you know, provided at the beginning of this process. And certainly it's not gonna get any cheaper. Any particular design is not gonna get any cheaper the longer we wait to bid it and build it. Because, uh, of inflation. So, uh, I'm not convinced that a radical redesign of this. Uh, of this facility would be able to make it cheaper. And as far as the usability of it, um. No matter what design we end up with, somebody's not gonna like it. And somebody's probably not gonna like it for very true and legitimate reasons, but we have to factor in. The big picture. We need to make sure we are meeting the ADA requirements. We need to make sure we are doing so in such a way that, you know, makes it as easy as possible to use. But we also have to be mindful of cost. We have to be mindful of the environmental impact. So I guess my guidance is, um. I think what we should do is take a look at the current design, see if there's any way we could modify that kind of on the margins to take. Some of the cost out and, uh, just rebid that, uh, essentially rebid the design as is. At the same time, uh, we need to be thinking about, uh, the ADA parking. Making that as accessible, as accessible and user friendly as possible. But, uh, I'm not in favor of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on reconfiguring, uh, a, a parking lot. Because that's what it's gonna cost easily. Um, so my guidance is essentially, uh, I regret that we didn't approve this. Uh, this bid last time around. I think we should, uh, move forward with essentially the same thing this time.
Councilmember Hatakakis.
So, um, I will start off by saying I don't think we should move forward with any sort of temporary, um, solution. The ADA access is very important and I think spending any time and money on that will take our. Resources away from getting to where we want to be and that is to have the dog beach, um, accessible as possible. I've been down there a handful of times and there are always people there enjoying it. Um, I personally thought that the, the design that we. You know, um, had last week or two weeks ago was a very clever way of solving the problem as it was presented at the time. Um, I did feel, um, that that's where we should have gone, um, but if we are trying to. And I totally feel for the folks that have, that were unhappy with the ADA. Cause I don't, it wasn't really any longer than the walk from the ADA spots to where they would go anywhere. In, at the end. Um, but I do feel that we have, if we're gonna do this right and try to make the. Shortest distance possible, we have to solve the ADA parking issue and that's not gonna be a cheap, um, solution. Um, so if we're gonna re. Re-envision this, I think we have to look at what the parking lot, how that functions, how we can get ADA. Spots closer to the entrance. Who knows how much that's going to affect, I don't know how the beach launch works. Um, so, uh. Mike Callahan, could you talk a little bit about the, the access and what it would take to move? Or let more people in or would we move the entrance further away so that we wouldn't have this key card access?
Michael Callahan, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation. So the, the access to the, uh, Church Street Boat Ramp is a, is a gate. Is a key card or push, push button gate. It's where it is because of the way the design is. If, we, we couldn't really move it farther south without having to re-engineer the whole parking lot. And take out a handful of parking spaces. There's twenty-two, um. Parking spaces on the west side of the parking lot and there are seven parallel parking spots along the east side of the road. So moving that gate farther south would just create more parking congestion and, and create a bottleneck area. And we'd have to still come up with a turnaround somehow. So we would just end up having to redesign the whole area. So, you know, right now where the gate is, we can find a way, we're figure out a way of being able to get people access. Uh, for the, for the parking, for the, wherever the gate is, you know, the dog beach ramp gate is gonna be. So we're figure out the Church Street Boat Ramp Gate to allow those, those patrons. It may require putting in a new system that we can actually access from our community centers, that when somebody actually does get a. Uh, get the pass for the dog beach, that they could show like a, I don't know, maybe, uh, accessible parking placard to us. And then we could issue a key fob or card and activate it at that point in time. That would be ideal, but that would probably require a whole new gate system there.
Okay. And it, do you think, um, in your estimation, is there a way to, um, retrofit? The ADA parking spots in that lot potentially?
Yeah, yes, I mean, talking to staff and looking at the usage of the lot. Um, first off, you know, we're, we're gonna have to come up with some sort of accessible parking in that lot, uh, regardless. So this is just, uh, you know, a step in the right direction really for, for a larger, um, situation. So we're making it work.
So we're basically speeding up the process of granting ADA access then to the boat launch in parallel to this?
I believe so, yes.
Um, thank you. That, that helps. Um, I, personally, I, I think. It, to do the, to do this, we should, um, reimagine our parking situation there to, um, grant ADA accessibility. I think that we all, we all have to be mindful of, um, not moving the target for staff when we're. Working on these projects, um, you know, um, and I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Reed followed by Wen followed by Revel.
Actually, I would really like to hear what my colleagues who haven't spoken yet. Uh, this is an issue that, um. One, we agreed months ago that we want to reopen the dog beach. We understand that in order to have the dog beach, there has to be ADA accessibility. I'm not gonna question anyone's sincerity, um, but I. Sometimes, uh. Sometimes folks, um. Find more workable reasons to oppose something for a reason that maybe isn't, you know. I, I think some folks may have been concerned about the cost here. And, uh, found other reasons other than cost, uh, to oppose it. Um, but assuming that that isn't the case and that folks are willing to spend. Potentially a significant amount more on this project than anticipated, I. I do think the argument about the pathway when listening to the folks who. Are going to need to use it, um, that came to the podium at our last meetings and this meeting. That the walkway is, I, I can hear folks when they say that the walkway is too long. Um, and it seemed, w- we voted the project down, uh, or we tabled the project until now, which essentially is. Uh, defeated our ability to. Move forward with it as it was bid out. So I think at this point. If there, if there was no valid reason to question the initial designs. One, I, I would hope that we wouldn't be in this position now. Um, but given that we are here and given that there are some valid concerns, I think it. Makes sense for us to go back out and hear out the neighbors. I, I don't know if I feel completely comfortable. You know, saying that it's the. I mean, I guess the group is self-appointed and we recognize them, but the dog part, whatever the group is called, but. I, I think it needs to be an open process, uh, where anyone feels welcome and not just if you're a part of this particular group. I. And nor just a part of the, even the, the committee, the city committee on disability. I think we need to make sure that this is truly. An inviting open process if we're gonna go back out again and, um. Yeah, so, uh. I don't know what's coming before council. What really are the next steps? I guess that's my final question. So let's say that council says. It's just for discussion here tonight, um, so we're not gonna take any action. So what are. What are we doing? And what, and I mean that genuinely.
It would be good if there could be some alignment among the council members as to how to proceed. Right now, it's been a little bit all over the place, so I don't feel like it's very clear exactly what staff is supposed to do, but. In all honesty, I mean, staff can do whatever is directed as long as it's not illegal or unethical. So if we want to hire a consultant and go redo the process, um, that is fine if we want to rebid. I mean, the options are sort of, as I understand them, are what we kind of discussed.
Okay, well, I would.
It would be good to have alignment in the feedback.
Yeah, then I would encourage someone, it's not, certainly not gonna be me, I don't have. Haven't spent a ton of time on this, as much as time as other folks have, uh, so I would just encourage. Someone who has an opinion on, a strong opinion on this and who's done a lot of research to make a motion, um. To give direction. I, I think that's really the only way we can truly know if there's alignment, is if there's a vote of folks and I would hope that folks would. Um, you know, commit to the direction that their vote would indicate. So that's it. Thank you.
Before we go on, I just want to, um, express agreement with that. I think it is obvious that there is not some sort of. Uh, kumbaya-esque consensus building up here and it would be, um. A sort of deranged embarrassment, but also immoral, given that we are talking about a civil rights issue. For the outcome of this to be like, ugh, I don't know, I guess we'll just not worry about it for a while. So, so I would hope that. That at the end of this discussion, which. You know, everyone got a snack. Um, there's a. Very clear direction given to staff to do something. And I think, given the, where we seem to be, it's probably gonna require a vote, not just sort of a, a vibe. Uh, councilmember Wen followed by Revel.
Well, um, I was on the council when the dog beach was created. It happened because the lake levels reached. Uh, I think a forty-year low level and people realized that beach appeared. And so we created a dog beach and it lasted for a very long time. In fact, in twenty thirteen, it was six hundred feet. Wide. In twenty sixteen, it was zero feet wide. The lake, uh, incre, the lake level increased two feet during those three year, during that three year period. Uh, so I'm not in favor of anything that's perpendicular, that sticks out into the. That makes itself vul, vulnerable to the wave action and the lake levels. I think that that's, that that would be very short sighted, given. The, really the volatility of, of the lake. Uh, the lake has gotten much more volatile in its. Lake levels as we know, um, over, that's coming along with climate change. So I think. Initially, when we saw the ramp that was protected by armoring and the boardwalk. I was supportive of the boardwalk because it was less expensive. Um, and it didn't take up as much of the, the dog beach. I think, um. We're losing sight of the, the goal here, which is to get an ADA accessible dog beach. By going back out, uh, increasing our costs. I think the, the goal here would be to solve the parking problem and choose one of the two designs. That have been presented to us, either the boardwalk or the, the, the ramp. Uh, I, I am in favor of the boardwalk because I think that it, it is, it leaves more of the beach available to the dogs. And the dog beach users, um, but I'm, I, I, I think solving the parking problem is doable. Uh, but going back out again to start again, I think is really a waste of our money. I think we have two good solutions available to us and that we should go out and rebid either one of those. Uh, if the majority of this council is willing to go with a more expensive ramp, I would be willing to do that. Uh, if I had been present at the last meeting, I would have voted to support the boardwalk with making the parking adjustments. Uh, but I don't think that we should go back out. We're really tacking on. Tens and tens of thousands of dollars if we do that.
Councilmember Revel.
Okay, um, so first I have a question and then I'll get to a comment. Um, so I'm looking at the, the drawing. So I'm looking at the, the drawing that was presented to us at a previous meeting, showing the two options. And I can't tell, looking at the boardwalk version, I can't tell where the parking, closest parking would be to the north. Because if, if we're talking about Yale, um,
Yeah, so I mean, this is not, this was pre-designed, so this is not the exact comment. Cause after we did this presentation, we had multiple engagements and, um, then design also kicked in. But if you can picture the, um, just north of here is the entrance to Clark Street Beach. And just on the other side of it, there are some ADA parking spaces that are headed in ADA parking.
Right. Cause I'm thinking if we do go with the boardwalk version, then putting the ADA parking over there in the boat parking lot is not very helpful. So would it?
Um, I would, you know what? I did not check the distance, well, partly because I'm not entirely sure what makes sense in terms of locating ADA spaces. And I'm aware that the closest spaces are supposed to be the ADA accessible spaces, but they also have to meet the requirements that are set out by the, um, federal government. So the, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure where we would put the ADA spaces, but depending on where, it would just depend on, um, what the distance is. And maybe even if we added spaces into this parking lot, they might not be that much further than, um, the current situation.
Right, yeah.
Or that much closer, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, I guess I would second, uh, councilmember Wen. I mean, um, I, I'm comfortable with either of the, either the boardwalk or the switchback. I, I, and I do prefer the boardwalk, especially if, I, I think maybe the, the parking solution is what's key to choosing between the two. So if the, if we could do ADA parking that would be close to the, the entrance, the dog beach entrance for the boardwalk, I, I would think that would be ultimately the easy, easier solution. We wouldn't have to be redesigning the whole, um, boat parking lot area. So, so I, I, my, my preference would be for the boardwalk, especially if we can figure out, you know, what the parking answer might be.
Councilmember Saffron.
So I guess we're all gonna talk. So, uh, my, I'll be very succinct. I mean, really, my opinion is irrelevant compared to the opinions of the people who are gonna use this. I don't have a dog or a disability. I'd like to see us have as much engagement as possible. I understand there's already been engagement, but ultimately, the cost is gonna be what the cost is. But, um, having the people that this is intended to benefit and also bring us in compliance with, uh, federal law, satisfied with the outcome is the most important thing. So if, whatever it is with parking, whichever shape the ramp takes, whatever, but, um, it has to be something that, um, the intended users will be satisfied with. And so whatever that is, that's what I'd like to see us do.
At this time, you're absolutely right. No one is asking to speak for a first time because there is no such person. We go back, what's that?
Um, I do exist, but it's okay.
Uh, sorry, there, there is such a person, but that person's hand is not up, correct?
Exactly.
All right. Never say extraneous things. We go back now for second opportunities, uh, to councilmember Burns, who's got a minute and a half left.
I, I think we could go back out and do community engagement. Personally, I think, um, we've heard from the community. They're gonna tell us in some ways what they've already told us. These meetings, if we continue to discuss this, any updated proposal, it'll be at these type of meetings where people can provide public comment. Again, I'm always, we can go back out for community engagement. I also just think more specifically, what I need is just, I'm, I would love an opportunity to talk to, I don't know if the Smith Group or the design team, to ask them some very specific questions that I think only they can answer in this situation. And that would help me understand what all of our options are. Cause again, I don't know, and maybe it was, but I don't know if our criteria before really emphasized distance. And so if we added that to the scenario for the design team, could they come up with solutions, other solutions perhaps? And that's the question I would have for them. I don't necessarily need a long, drawn-out community engagement process to get there. I think this is, can be as simple as, um, compiling all the feedback we've heard in the last two meetings from the community, uh, certainly offering, you know, to take in any additional feedback. I think pretty quickly, we could get a response from Smith Group about, um, maybe another scenario that, that, uh, addresses some of the recent concerns that we've heard. And if not, if they say, look, this is, even though you've added that criteria, this is, this is, it, this is the best we can do, then, um, that'd be helpful for me to know, for sure. Cause I don't think parking is gonna be an issue. This, this parking lot feels like a really large, underutilized parking lot, period. So we can figure out parking now whether or not it serves, which design it serves best. Again, I, I won't know that until, whether it's these two or some other one that the design ke- team could come up with, I won't know until I have that conversation. And I don't, I don't think they're, they've joined us t- to- tonight, right?
I do wanna emphasize, I know we've talked a lot about the distance from the thing, but if you look at this switchback, it is much longer than this little piece here. If you figure out total, the space or the length that people walk, I haven't done the measurement and that's something right now that I really wish I had done. But just looking at, the drawings are pretty much to scale with this, uh, looking at the roundabout. This is not that different than this. It's just the distance to parking that then we're arguing about.
And
So either one of these
Say that again, I'm sorry.
And also point of information.
This is a long
Point of information for the folks online, this and that mean nothing to them, yeah.
Option one has a switchback that has to go down a fair amount of distance. And so it is a longer switchback. This has very little on the dog beach. The length is taken up in this. The distances of these two things, there might be one that's more than the other, but not significantly more. So what we're really talking about is the distance from the parking to the beginning of either the boardwalk or the switchback. And that is a different question than what we're talking, most of us are talking about. And I apologize that I don't have that information right now. I was not expecting that to be the conversation.
The questions that I'd have for, for them is, is, again, is this the only scenario for a ramp? You know, that's whether it's perpendicular or par- like, is this it? If we don't go with option two and we want something closer to option one, is this the only design that they can come up with?
When they designed this option two ramp, where most of it is the boardwalk on the adjacent beach, and then there's a ramp onto the dog beach. This, half of it is, there's like half of it and then a line and then kind of a dashed area, which is the rest of it on the dog beach. That's because they made this ramp much longer than is normally gonna appear, um, exposed. They are burying the ramp in the sand, so it continues under the sand. So that if the sand level changes, then the ramp still stays perfectly functional, no matter, you know, over a wide range of sand levels. But the actual length of how much we anticipate there to be is actually not that difference of a walkway between the switchback and the boardwalk. But once you're on a dog beach, there's relatively little options. So there's been criticism that, well, we shouldn't have designed it for a six-foot drop. We should have only designed it for a three and a half or a four-foot drop because that's what's there today. But what staff is recommending is you design it for both of those drops because what's there in a year could be very different. Because two years ago, it was six feet. Who's to say that two years from now, it's not six feet again? And we don't really want to have it become dysfunctional. This is one of our most transient beaches. It comes, it goes, it changes on a monthly, on a yearly basis. And so we wanna make sure that what we're providing works in all situations. Otherwise, as soon as it doesn't work, we're in the position of closing down the dog beach.
Can you explain to me how sand in, the sand levels impact the design? Cause it almost feels like, is the sa- the sand supporting the structure? If not, why would it, why does it?
No, the sand does not
Tell me how, why that's
Sand does not really support the structure, or at least not the top layers of sand. But every time we have a high wave event, there are waves on this beach moving the sand around. Every time the wind is a certain amount, wi- sand blows out. Like, there's just a lot of events that affect this beach.
Right.
All of our beaches are impacted by the change in Lake Michigan water levels. And the lowest Lake Michigan level to the highest Lake Michigan level is a swing of six feet in water level. Usually, historically, that's taking like thirty years to navigate. But unfortunately, in two thousand thirteen, we had the low level. In two thousand twenty, we had a high level record. So that is changing very fast. It's extremely volatile to compare to how it has been. And so what councilmember Wen was pointing out is that it's really hard to know, what will this beach look like in six months?
And, and, and sorry, cause, but I mean, how does that impact design? Very specifically.
The ramp needs to ground itself at grade, whatever that grade is. If it goes up a foot, if it goes down a foot, if it goes up two feet, if it goes down two feet. That's not true at every beach that the city of Evanston owns, but we have the history to know that it is true here. The people that surveyed it in two thousand twenty-two did not make a mistake. They're licensed surveyors and the drop that you had to navigate was six feet. Just because it would be easier or cheaper if it's only three feet, doesn't mean that we were designed to a three-foot solution.
Does that mean that, that, uh, more of, you have to build more of the ramp? Some, that, that some, some years, it'll, there'll be more of the ramp underground than others. Is that, is that what that means from a design standpoint? Okay.
And so we wanna build something that can respond to that variation, which is part of why this is more expensive than we would hope because we are trying to build against a range of conditions in order to provide the appropriate level of access, no matter what the sand level is or the water level.
Yeah. I, I guess my position is I'm, I'm, I'm fine rebidding. I would just, if we don't wanna do community engagement, which again, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need a long, drawn-out community engagement process, but if we don't wanna do that, I'm fine rebidding. I would just hope that since we're here anyway, right? And we can't just accept the, the, the previous, uh, bid that we had, let's at least allow council to have a conversation with the engineering company to see if there are other scenarios that we can present bef- that can be presented to us, whether that's, that can be presented to us in some way before we go out and rebid. That's all I would ask. Cause I, I think there's, there's a chance that there are, th- this is it. This is the best that they can, this is all that they can offer, even with that kinda emphasis on, on the new cri- criteria of distance. And, but it's possible that they may have some ideas, so that's all, thank you.
Continuing with second, uh, cracks, uh, councilmember Hadakatis with two minutes left.
So, um, I would say that this main sticking point, I think we have to figure out the ADA access for the parking first. Otherwise, we're just rebidding to pay more for what we, like, some of us liked a few weeks ago. Now that being said, the other thing I just wanna, um, talk about in the design process, I know when we were doing the, the skate park, we had the di- design charrette or whatever the, the French term is. But that was really useful in getting productive feedback from a con- from a constituency group. You know, I, we can't, we can't have too many cooks in the kitchen, you know, drawing on back of napkins. It's just gonna get too chaotic. But I think key requirements and getting some feedback early on in presenting them, kind of the options early would kind of be helpful and would have maybe avoided this, this thing. But, um, I think I wanna reiterate that in the future, all of us up here, we have to be really explicit about what the most important things are in when we're designing these or like sending out staff to, um, make decisions because we, like I said, we can't move the target on you guys. So, um, that's, that's it.
So given that, um, parking is really of interest, right now, I can't do this because we're in the middle of a really intense construction season. We are drastically short-staffed trying to implement that, um, oversight that we need to do. But given a little time, staff can look at what are options for providing ADA parking for the different, um, different access types if we're interested. And so I can go back with staff and we can look at, how do we wanna provide ADA parking, regardless of which option it is, and get that information and potentially get a, a cost estimate together for that. Parking lot is a very different thing than an ADA access ramp with fencing and gates and electrical lines. And that's, they really don't need to be the same designer, they really don't need to be the same contractor.
Continuing with second opportunities, councilmember Reed with a minute left.
Thank you, looking forward to a motion from someone. But, um, I, I, I will say that one, so it is, um, it, I'm starting to feel like it's a shame that we're here. Because if we're just gonna go back out and rebid the same plan, um, then we've just wasted time and money. But, and the point that some folks are trying to make, uh, for some time. I, I do think that certainly we have to, I would hope that a part of the motion that someone's gonna make would be to look at a shorter ramp. I, I, again, I do think that that is can, uh, potentially convincing. It's been mentioned, but, um, if, if we can, um, start the, the cutback at a different point, uh, to make it a bit shorter, I'd be supportive of that. Also, you mentioned earlier that we have been moving forward with this using our, um, not lakefront revitalization or was it?
The shoreline stabilization contractor.
Shoreline stabilization.
Coastal engineer.
Okay, um, and so what was the, when you mentioned that we may have to rebid because we may hit a threshold where fifty percent of the
Yes.
So can you explain that a bit more?
Sure. In any city of Evanston contract, we
And I'm sorry, also speci- not, not that specifically. Can you explain its relevance to our discussion tonight?
Yes. So when we talk about redesigning, doing more public engagement, whatever, um, we're looking at a process that could be a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars all in. And I do not have off the top of my head what the original contract for the shoreline stabilization was, but there's a point at which we would exceed in change orders fifty percent of the original contract. So we would want to, at that point, if we know it's likely, then we would just go out and RFP a new contract. The, the challenge that we are facing in terms of getting somebody who's qualified, that if you're not using the engineer that did everything up till now, who did the survey, who's really familiar with the lakefront, all the other things, they are likely to be more expensive. Would also say that it's very unusual for we go out for a request for qualifications or a request for proposal saying we want an ADA ramp and we get back twenty different versions and proposals of what an ADA ramp would be. What we're getting back is like, we hear your concerns, you wanna meet with variable sand levels, you wanna deal with grounding it on sand in a high wave action area. They don't give us the solutions as part of the proposal. We have to actually pay them for those. So just going out for a proposal process is not gonna get us a bunch of solutions before we pick an engineer. There seems to be some confusion about that, that if we'd just gone out, we would have gotten back all these ideas, but that's not really what they do. They wanna get paid to design it.
Okay. I'm looking forward to a motion.
Well, speaking of which, at this time, there are only two people signed up for second cracks. Each of them have their time fully expired, so I'll ask you to Well, speaking of which, at this time, there are only two people signed up for second cracks. Each of them have their time fully expired, so I'll ask you to be efficient. That look seemed to suggest, come on, we're just getting started, but I would say we're not. Uh, so Councilmember Kelly first.
Okay. So I just want to say, again, I think the, the issue, the original issue is that there were two ideas, um, that came forward to the community after already being developed. And, and we really need to be respectful. We have heard, but, um, Councilmember Burns, to your point, we've heard the community, we want a shorter ramp, we need a shorter ramp, a direct pa, a direct ramp. It is not okay to have parking north of Clark Street Beach. Those are designated places for Clark Street Beach. So I think we absolutely need to figure out the parking here as adjacent, as close to the entrance as possible. We know based on the elevation now that our mobility challenge users need forty feet to get down to the level. We don't want to make them walk in an order and amount as, um, in an order and amount. I think to just say because of simplicity, we want to go back and just take one of these is really just, just being disrespectful to our mobility challenge users if we just say, let's go ahead and just rebid what we already did. We've heard from them now. I think it's worth engaging a little bit more. I love the idea of charrettes that, um, Councilmember Hadakakis proposed. That's how we come forward with something that's, you know, that, that more appropriately meets the needs. Um, this isn't about us, it's about them. And so I really hope we can minimally, you know, look at the parking. It is all about parking, about getting from that parking to that, to the destination. And, you know, we seen the AG's tri, tri folder that he was passing that, that was being passed out of the Disabilities Pride March, that that's what we want in parking. It has to be as close as possible to the destination. So I hope that we can at least, um, all agree to at least make a motion to eh, look at establishing, um, eh, in fact, I'd like to go ahead, I guess, then and make that motion. To direct staff to please look at parking, um, as close as possible, whether it's, however it would be. Um, and the shortest possible ramp for our pathway for our mobility challenge users. Um, and, you know, yeah, I think that's it. And, you know, at least some discussion.
So can you, can you state the motion clearly, please?
I will do my very best. So I'd like to motion, um, to ask that staff, look into parking, um, as close as possible in the large boat parking area, um, as close as possible to the dog beach and look at the very shortest path possible, given, you know, the forty feet that they need to get eh, eh, by ADA standards to the dog beach.
So I want to try to restate that. I think Councilmember Kelly moves that staff investigate a redesign that minimizes the length of the path and prioritizes parking access?
Right. As close to the entrance of the dog beach as possible in the boat area, just so I'm clear. We don't want to not to the other side, not to the north of the entrance, but to the south where the, where the parking, where the boat. Big, large boat parking areas.
Just according to our rules, I think the motion should be in writing. And maybe we take a two-minute break.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever the mayor wants to do. Well, if you okay, eh, wh- why don't we take a all right, a few quick things. First of all, is there, will, will there be a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so we should take the, uh, we should take the time to have it written and then I think, I think Councilmember News is gonna want to speak to it, um, which will, so we will in fact, take a break while the motion is being drafted and then, uh, reconvene, uh, at that time. All right, the, oop, that's the wrong button. All right, the city council will come back to order, please. I have just emailed our colleagues, uh, the text of this motion. Councilmember Kelly moves that staff meet with mobility challenged users of the dog beach, of the dog beach working group, which includes mobility, mobility challenged users, and investigate options that are more suitable to their needs, including, including the identification of accessible parking options as close to the dog beach entrance as possible, and create options for the shortest, most direct accessible path to beach level. Councilmember, uh, Reed, I believe, second, is that right? Councilmember Burns seconded. Uh, Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna oppose this motion and I'm gonna explain why, hopefully successfully. Uh, but as we were sitting here, I had a little light bulb moment. Uh, another word for that in Greek is a eureka moment, uh, attributed to the Greek mathematician Archimedes. One of his buddies was Pythagoras, who had a thing or two to say about right triangles. So, um, I think what we're talking about here is, you know, one of the hangups is the length of the, of the path. And that length of the path is the hypotenuse on a right triangle. Right? We need to get down from an elevated position to a lower position. We know where the elevated position is. That's the sidewalk level, the road level. We don't know where the, uh, lower position is going to be. Yeah, we know where it is now. Uh, but we don't know where it's gonna be tomorrow, or next week, or next year, or five or ten years down the road. That inherently is the challenge, is how do you design a, a ramp that, uh, you know, can accommodate that level of, uh, of that amount of difference? So the designers of this ramp, in order to accommodate the, um, that variable, uh, length of the leg of the triangle, have taken the only thing that they, you know, can assume is, eh, there are two things that are given. One is the level they start with, and then one is the slope of the, eh, of the hypotenuse. Right? That is, uh, you know, mandated by, uh, by the ADA law. Can only, whatever the angle is or the, the ratio of that slope, that's a given.
Yes.
Right? And so how do you design a ramp, yeah, given the starting point and that angle to accommodate, uh, an endpoint that is gonna change over the years? The only way you can do that, eh, to accommodate all foreseeable design scenarios is to make that long, longer. So that it will still be usable if the lake level, uh, goes down. And so to those that are objecting that the path is too long, like, I guess that's a legitimate objection. You know, who am I, an able-bodied person to question if that's too long? I, I guess it is, but that's what we're stuck with by the math of the situation and our desire to implement one design that will accommodate all foreseeable conditions. The only alternatives are to build a design that works for right now, and certainly we could do that with a more simple and direct and straight and shorter ramp, but that might not work. In fact, we know it's probably, we know with a high degree of certainty, it would not work. You know, every season for the next twenty years. So the design we have in front of us is the best possible solution. And whether that ramp is, you know, a winding one, uh, or a straight one, it's still essentially the same length because it's still the same rise over the same run. So we're kind of stuck with the length of the ramp. Maybe we could tweak it a little bit, uh, but we're stuck with that being essentially what it is. To more appropriately address the accessibility question, what we need to do is minimize the distance from the parking spot to the start of the ramp. And so I think, you know, we have probably agreement that we need to do something with parking to address that issue. But the ramp is what it has to be. It, we could be laid out a different way, but it's still gonna be long. And we have already evaluated different scenarios for how to arrange that ramp. And we moved forward with the design approach that seemed to be the most, uh, cost effective. So a couple of quick questions. I'm gonna, I'm prepared to make a counter motion, assuming this one doesn't move forward. I'll save my additional questions for that discussion.
Councilmember, uh, Burns followed by Reed.
Um, are we sure if, if the elevations stay the same across the entire distance? Have we looked into that? So we know it at this point, cause that's where, but do we know it from this point, for example? Like, is it lower in other areas or is it consistent? And if we don't, if we don't know.
Ground level a little bit lower.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking.
I think Councilmember Newsma does.
Yeah, what he's asking is, I said, the starting point is fixed.
Yeah.
Councilmember Burns is wondering if the starting point in fact varies a little bit. If you go further down the parking lot, is, is it a little bit lower?
It may be slightly different. Um, it would, we would have to check that.
We've kind of picked this entrance because I think it's the current entrance, but it doesn't have to be. There could be, we could create another entrance, as long as they can get on the dog beach. At some point, there could be another entrance created.
This is true. There is really no parking that's anywhere near that entrance because of the geometry of the lot. So we would really be changing things. I'm sorry. This is all of a sudden not. Just scroll down, 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 down. Going there, what, back. That whole, um, we're on the slide that says Church Street Boat Ramp Lot versus ADA. The north end is the north end of the lot where the dog beach access is. This is the Church Street ramp. The parking actually stops like halfway. So right now, the closest parking is much further away. And this is actually arguably a little harder to modify. There's a lot of trees here and there's the infrastructure for the building. But I, it's certainly something we could look at. I will note that I know enough about what's happening at the beach to know that this is the first spot that goes underwater and that over here is much more likely to be beach when the water levels are higher.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not saying all the way, cause you can even see in this photo where you wouldn't want to put it, but there are some, there are at least two other points where you could, or there's at least one point where you could, where it would make sense to put it. Uh, my point is, is that, I, I think I, what I'm asking for, we don't necessarily get here with this motion. I just wanted another opportunity to discuss this. Let's not try to be engineers tonight. Let's just simply ask them, we're, we're at, we're re, we're adding or reemphasizing a pr, a existing criteria to say, this is the one thing that we want to see if you can solve for, and let them tell us what they can and cannot do. Looking at different interest points as an option, looking at different ways to shape the triangle. Let's let them do their job. And I don't think it, you know, it'll cost something, but it won't cost as much as it would if we have to go out and do this whole drawn out process. I think we know what the question is that we're trying to have answered. Let's not try to figure that out today. Let's reengage Smith Group. Let them come up with scenarios or tell us, look, this is all we can do. And then I, I'd be fine rebidding at that point. I just, I want the engineers to tell us what we can and cannot do based on a, a more thorough investigation of this question than what I, I think we're gonna get up here.
Councilmember Reed followed by Kelly.
I do, um, I think it makes sense for us to, you know, eh, go through this process to look at this a bit uh, deeper to see if there are other options. I do also want to highlight something that hasn't been said tonight, but has been brought up. We also want to think about the, um, the eco, the natural ecosystem that's by the lakefront there that, um, if we can protect it, there are some folks who put, um, quite a bit of time into nurturing that back to its natural state. Um, and we, we need that throughout our town and particularly along our lakefront. Um, and so I want to keep that in mind too. Whether this going back out allows us to look at a plan that does a better job of protecting that as well as meeting the expressed concerns of folks who are living with disabilities. So I would encourage, uh, I, I wouldn't, we're here, we're here now, so I would encourage, uh, to keep going down the path of whatever path we're going down.
Councilmember Kelly.
So, um, I agree with Councilmember Burns. I don't want to be engineering this evening either, just to give direction. I think you, you summed it up well. If you want to make a friendly amendment to my motion, I accept that. I think, you know, the geometry, we're all landing at the same place. So if you want to bury, I mean, we can, and I'm not gonna get into too much, but sure, go ahead and bury it deeper in case it recedes, but we're still getting to the same place and it's also safer for disabled, mobility challenged people not to have long path. We want to make it, um, again, as short and direct as possible. So Councilmember Burns, if, um, would you like to modify that motion?
Your motion is, I think, there with what I'm saying. I mean, we may want to, I may want to add something, but, cause you said.
Well, so one, one way to get there would be to vote the current motion down and then let that motion be made.
Yeah, we could do that. I can do that.
Or it could just be withdrawn.
Yeah.
Also that.
So I, I think Councilmember Newsma's motion is close. I, I just would want to make sure that we're directing staff to ask the engineers to try to solve for this concern that we have.
I'm sorry, but I didn't.
And so if we can fit that within your motion.
I don't think that Councilmember Newsma's motion, um, does that. I don't think he's.
So, so Councilmember Burns has the floor at this time.
Cause it says, well, and I don't, maybe we should just, did you withdraw the motion already or what did you, what did you do?
No, I, I absolutely think we need to respect the users of the beach. I'm not gonna say we should just pick another plan because it's easiest for us. And that's what I feel like at this point. I like what you said, Bobby. I think we need to direct staff to come look at the parking, explore, um, getting parking as close to the entrance as possible and create the shortest path and let them figure it out. I agree with you on that.
I do, I do have a question for clarification with Councilmember Kelly's motion. So it says meet with, um, users of the dog beach. So is that one meeting that the consultant is coming to? Is it two meetings? How many meetings are we discussing? Because I need to get a cost proposal from the consultants.
I understand. Two.
Two meetings and just those two meetings with the dog beach users?
With the dog beach, with the dog beach working group, which includes, um, mobility challenged users and any members of the Disabilities Commission.
So we're not having a separate meeting with the Disabilities Commission?
No, I said with any members who would be willing to participate, who are on, on, at those many meetings.
Councilmember Revel.
Uh, well, I just want to thank Councilmember Newsma for his, I thought, very persuasive, uh, explanation of why the, the ramps that we're talking about are the length that they are. It's, I mean, it's really unfortunate that that doesn't meet the needs of some of our mobility challenged residents, but I, I, I'm persuaded that we're, we're not gonna find a, a solution that's shorter or much shorter. And, you know, so the real key is, you know, what is the best parking option to minimize that distance to actually get started on the the downward slope. So I'm, I'm waiting for Councilmember Newsma's motion.
Well, so I think, so I think it's time now to take a vote on Councilmember Kelly's motion and if folks are looking for Councilmember Newsma's motion, that would be next if this were not to pass. I think if this were to pass, we would be done. Uh, so that's, you know, if you want to vote on Councilmember Newsma's, then you should vote against this. If you want to vote on this, if you want to advance this current thing and, and then move to the next item, you should vote yes. With the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Hadakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Oh, she's not online. Uh, Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Sufferden? Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With four voting in favor and four voting against, there's a tie. I break the tie by voting no. The motion does not carry. Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I am about to, uh, make a motion, but just a couple of clarification questions before I do. If we wanted to bid that switchback design, uh, is that design kind of bid ready?
No, it would have to be designed.
Okay. Eh, and we would also need to do a totally separate permit process for the Army Corps?
Yes.
Okay. So therefore, uh, I am gonna make the motion, which I emailed, uh, forty-five minutes ago, uh, to direct staff to rebid the current design, uh, with any appropriate modifications that would reduce cost or improve usability and also develop, to develop a parking solution.
Councilmember Newsma moves to that staff rebid the current design with any appropriate modifications that would reduce cost and or improve usability and also develop a parking solution. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Kelly. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Newsma sells the floor.
In that motion is working with the engineers to, uh, address the questions that Councilmember Burns has raised. If there's anything simply, uh, we can do, uh, to modify the current design that would make it better, great. If not, so be it.
Councilmember Kelly followed by Burns. Councilmember Kelly followed by Burns.
So I just need some clarity. So you want to keep the same long meandering path through the dunes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, where are you proposing that we put the parking? If it's going to be going through the dunes?
I am proposing we direct staff to develop an answer to that question.
Well, it's already, we're already talking four hundred plus feet. We're using the same parking that's already designated for the Clark Street Beach from where it's entering. So, I mean, I, when we have all that parking available in the boat area, we know there's plenty of parking. I met with parks and rec people. There's even space to the east of, between the, between the parking lot and the rocks. I just question what we're doing here. I mean, given, giving the requirements for parking, I'm sorry, but I question whether we're opening ourselves up to, you know, liability here by insisting that parking.
These concerns a year ago when it would have been.
I did immediately. When these, both of these proposals were brought forth, many of us said, oh, no, we were all uncomfortable with both the proposals. And then we were broadsided with this being bitted out. We all said no to each one. They were both too long. One, you know, took up unnecessary amount of the Dog Beach. Uh, this simply isn't necessary. I'm sorry, I don't, um, you do not need to run a ramp this long. You can bury a ramp if you want. You can bury some of it so in case the beach recedes. But we do not need that much ramp to get people to the Dog Beach. And we've heard people loud and, loud and clear now. And I'm really sorry that, um, you know, I feel like there's a certain insensitivity to people imagining, there's a lot of safety issues. If somebody with a walker going through the dunes with dogs coming back and forth, should something happen? Um, I, I mean, this is just, they're isolated. It's not inclusive. I'm just really disappointed.
Point of order. Just out of curiosity, are we still tracking time? Because we've been talking about this for an hour.
Oh, way more than that. Um,
At least.
So just a little, little sort of look behind the curtain over here. Basically, everybody was out of time when the first motion that got made. And it was clear there was going to have to be discussions about the motion. So I just began read, I gave everyone a fresh five for each motion, a decision that I'm perhaps now regretting. Councilmember Burns.
Oh, just before you start, um, I understood that regardless of what happens, where the entrance ramp is, which alternate, or if we're coming up with new alternates, that staff would be trying to find new parking closest to the entrances.
Councilmember Burns.
I'm working on another motion. But it's basically because after looking at this, I'm not, only thing we're not, we're not agreeing on, Councilman Newsma is, I think it's, we should allow the engineers to tell us, I'm adding shorten the ramp to the language. And if they can't do it because of, if they can't do it, they're going to tell us they can't do it. They're not going to say they can do it just to appease this body. They're going to say, based on our, they're going to say, we agree with Councilman Newsma. You need to do the triangle or whatever. He just said, cool, let them tell us that though. I just, I don't want to be told that here. I want them to tell me that this is the best that they can do. And I want them to consider not only the area behind the barrier or whatever you call it, but other more suitable areas. If that's the most suitable area, just let them tell us. I promise they will. They're not gonna, they're not gonna go on this same journey that we're, trust me, that we went on tonight. They're going to be very direct about what they can and cannot do. And I just want to make sure that that happens. Uh, so I'm sending another, an amendment to this.
Just point of order. Are we willing to do a friendly amendment?
Yeah, that's, well, he probably wants to see it first, so I'm going to send it now.
So we'll, we'll stand, uh, at ease for a moment while Councilmember Burns, uh, drafts this amendment. Well, there's a motion on the floor and there's now a motion being made to amend it.
Well, there's a request for maybe a friendly because Councilmember Wen would be correct. You can't make another motion while an open motion is on the floor.
I may be willing to entertain a friendly amendment, but Councilmember, uh, Burns is correct. I would like to know.
He wants to see. I just sent it over.
Okay.
Did you send it to everybody or just?
Everybody.
Okay.
This is simple and we can get on with our evening.
Can I second?
No.
Hold on, just let's.
And for everybody out there.
I'm not seeing it.
Land, uh, the motion, motion to direct staff to rebid the current design incorporating any appropriate modifications to reduce costs, shorten the ramp and/or improve usability and to develop a parking solution. This design could be implemented at the currently proposed location or any other suitable site. If I can get this from the engineers, I don't need a long drawn out community engagement process. I just want engineers to tell me.
I'm, I'm bumping on the, any other suitable site. Presumably, they already thought about that.
Then they'll tell us.
Right? So that's, I mean, that's a question for, for Laura.
I believe so, but we may have directed them to start at the entrance based on staff's knowledge that that is the location that is the highest point on the beach with the least amount of flooding.
Okay. Because I don't want to spend another hundred thousand dollars for them to evaluate a question that we've already kind of answered.
You think it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars for them to just tell us in their professional opinion whether or not there's another suitable location that's worth exploring?
Probably not, depending on exactly how intense of an analysis you want to get that information if, but um, to then develop it into a design.
See the development that where the cost is, yeah.
Expensive.
And I'm not saying that. I'm saying let's get the information and then we can make a decision. And they may say.
So, so hold on. So Councilmember Newsma, what's your, it's up to you.
I haven't received the email yet. Is, is anyone else?
Yeah, it's in front of me.
Yeah.
I can send it again, just.
Yeah, I'm reluctant to open up the scope to additional, uh, additional locations. Like that's where additional uncertainty is, has the uh, likelihood of adding additional cost to this whole thing.
Hold on to your delegates.
I, I would also recommend that if we do change the location of the ADA access, we make that the same location as the main access to the beach. Even if it's an area that floods more readily than the current access. Because what you're trying to do with ADA law is create equitable access. You can't have better access for able-bodied people than non-able-bodied people. So, um, we, it may be a shorter height. If we go that route, we'd need to move the entire access point.
Right.
If there's a significant difference in the elevation of the beach.
Right. So I guess what I'm hung up on is if we move to a different entrance point, it's not the same design. It's a totally different design.
It would be a different design.
Right. And that costs a whole bunch more money to
Yes.
design and who knows how much to, uh, to build. So, hey, Councilmember Burns, like, has a valid point. I would, it would be great for the engineer to tell us that where we're designing it is the best location. I think that's what you're after.
If we can, if we can pass this.
Point of order, point of order. As someone who uses the Dog Beach, the entrance is at the point of the beach where it is the widest. And as you go south, the beach narrows. And it going at different times, sometimes the beach is much narrower further south. The, where the entrance is now is where the beach is always the widest. I don't think that we should look at another location for an entrance because you'll end up with a ramp that goes into the water much more likely.
And I think that was a part of the criteria originally. So I haven't suggested that we should remove any of our criteria. I'm just saying we should reemphasize the one that has caused us to now talk about this for an hour. It's just, we're here for a reason, two hours. So we're here for a reason. Let's at least allow them to investigate that question. And along with the other criteria, and they'll decide whether or not there's another appropriate location. They may come back and say no.
So to your point, we've been here a while. Councilmember Newsma, it's up to you. You can say yes or no. If you say yes, then the friendly amendment happens and that can be voted on. If you say no, then your unchanged amendment will be voted on. I would say, why don't you make a decision and let's.
And also understand that if the things, if, if everybody votes the way they just did, I probably have the votes for this. Right? So let's, what's the point of dancing around? Let's just make the friendly amendment.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to vote my conscience here. I'm going to accept a portion of this friendly amendment, which is to add the shorten the ramp clause.
Is that okay with you? It's not a, it's, it's just, it's, it's literally the thing he said without the last sentence.
Exactly.
But we're not rebidding.
I just don't see how it's not a, if, if it's a real, it's not another look at it if we don't look at both sides of the barrier.
All right. So there's not, that's fine. That's the way to resolve this is by voting. So I would say.
They've already given us that design, I think.
So Councilmember Newsma, do you want to change your motion to add the shorten the ramp line?
Yes.
Okay. So, so Councilmember Newsma makes a substantive motion, which is to direct staff to rebid the current design incorporating any appropriate modifications to reduce cost, shorten the ramp and/or improve usability and to develop a parking solution. Remind me who seconded the motion?
Councilmember Wen.
Councilmember Wen seconds the motion. Would the clerk please take the roll on the motion just read?
Councilmember Hidakaris?
Nope.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With four voting in favor and four voting against, there's a tie. And once again, I break the vote, in this case by voting aye. The motion carries and staff have been, uh, directed as previously read. And just want to be very clear, I will, because what was, um, passed was a combination of two motions, uh, that were both sent in writing, but is not identical to either one. I will now forward the final, the final motion, uh, so it's available to everybody up here in writing. Now on item A seventeen.
Sorry, but that should have been presented to us, the final motion. I mean, I, it was really hard to see what it was. Everybody else had it sent in writing. Can we get that final motion first?
It, it's, it was sent, it's a, a portion of the last email you got. It's the, it's the, it's the first sentence, but not the second sentence, sentence of Councilmember Burns's motion.
I think it should be in writing. Where is it?
This brings us to item A seventeen. Uh, I actually pulled this because there's some technical issues with this. It's not quite ready. Um, and so I would request, uh, that it be held for the next.
I'll move ordinance sixty-seven oh, just to the next meeting.
Yeah, just if you hold it, then it'll appear on the next agenda.
To, the, a hold of, uh, A seventeen.
Second.
Councilmember, uh, Reed moves to hold ordinance sixty-seven dash oh dash twenty-four. Councilmember Hidakaris seconds. It will appear for action on the August twenty-sixth, City Council Agenda. And staff will have, for council's consideration, some technical amendments to clean up some issues that were identified, uh, very recently. Uh, this brings us now to item HCDC two. Councilmember Revel?
Uh, yes, I, I move approval of ordinance fifty-two dash zero dash twenty-four, amending the city's residential landlord tenant ordinance.
Councilmember, uh, Revel moves approval of ordinance fifty-two dash oh dash twenty-four. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am ready to approve this one tonight. Um, although I do want to acknowledge the question that was raised about the month-to-month. Uh, the, the effect of this ordinance as currently drafted on month-to-month leases uh, is something that it doesn't seem like has been fully, uh, contemplated. And that was just brought to our attention, or at least brought to my attention today. I would like to take some time to think about that. And if an additional change is in order, I would be happy to advance that. Uh, you know, well before this ordinance would go into effect, which would be, uh, January first of, uh, twenty twenty-five. So I'm ready to approve this as is, acknowledging that we might need to make a tweak.
Councilmember Reed followed by Revel.
Thank you. Um, I, I heard the ninety-day notice complaint there or, or concern there as well. I, I, I don't have my glasses, but I think, is our, is my friend still here? No, I think he's gone. Um, but, um, I think this is an example of grasping at straws and fear mongering around, uh, this ordinance and others. And I, and I say that because we're going to come back with an ordinance that folks have really been grasping at straws about, which is just cause. And if you read the plain language here, based on the scenario that the gentleman presented, there is nothing in this ordinance, nothing around the ninety-day notice that would eliminate a tenant's ability that if they have said that I want to go month-to-month until I get my new, um, apartment somewhere else because of a new job or whatever the case may be, there's nothing here that would prohibit that from happening. This is only, this is a protection for tenants who are on month-to-month leases, not locking tenants into, um, you know, quarterly leases. And so I, I just want that to be clear on the record. If the Law Department disagrees with what I'm saying, um, then please feel free to correct me. Um, but I, I don't think that's the case. And, and I hope that, um, you know, folks are clear-eyed when we come to a much more controversial and I think impactful, positively impactful, um, piece of legislation, which is, um, our just cause ordinance, which has a lot of confusion around it as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel.
Um, well, just, um, the, the, the way, the way it's currently, we're, we're dealing with, um, section five dash three dash six dash five on page six twenty-one, six twenty-two of your packet, if you're following along at home. Um, it, as, as it's written right now, it's consistent with the Cook County RLTO. Um, we could make a very minor change that might make people happier. And I'll, I'll just send that around. Because we could remove the phrase, the lease term shall be extended because, well, let me just send it to you and you'll see what. So, so the section would read, if the housing provider fails to give the notice required in section five dash three dash six dash five A to the tenant, the tenant may remain in the dwelling unit, um, for ninety days after the date that such written notice is received by the tenant. So it's, it, it doesn't imply that suddenly the tenant's going to have a ninety-day lease or something. Hey. I mean, so I'll, I'll, I'll move that and we'll see if folks want to make that change. I move that.
So, Councilmember Revel moves to amend five dash three dash six dash four dash B as just described, uh, and as is in everyone's inbox. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I, I do. I don't think it's necessary because I, but.
Councilmember Reed seconds.
I mean, I'm making the motion if that would make council members happy, more comfortable approving the RLTO. I'm also quite comfortable with us approving it without the amendment.
Well, well, um, just to have as much of the conversation on mic as possible, at this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. So we go back for a second time to Councilmember Reed with, uh, three and a quarter minutes left.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think this doesn't hurt in any way to have this language here. If it makes anything clear for folks. It, the language does say, uh, either before or after I remember reading it, it does say that, um, that if the, it says pretty much exactly this, but says that the terms of the lease shall remain the same as they were on the date prior to the issuance of the notice. Um, so I don't know if this even potentially confuses that. Um, but, um, if it makes folks feel more comfortable, if it doesn't really change anything for anyone, then I don't think we need to add it. I'm not seeing any, I also can't see, but I'm not, the vague, the bit that I can see, I'm not seeing reactions from folks down on the other.
Can I, can I make a, just, uh, in a little turn of the tables, can I make a point of order? There is a typo in the amendment. So Councilmember Revel meant five dash three dash six dash five B, not four.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Suggestion, yes.
I'm almost sure that's right. Isn't that right? Okay.
If somebody says yes, then I agree.
Okay. Sorry, Councilmember Reed, you have, back to you.
No, uh, I'm gonna draw my second.
Okay, no, that's fine.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Hatakakis.
So I, I feel if we are, cause we're trying to align ourselves with Cook County as much as possible to avoid this type of confusion. If our language is matching Cook County, I'm comfortable leaving this. Um, I do think, um, just for our housing providers out there, I, I would like to have our legal staff just, and housing staff just verify, um, any, any concerns around that language. But I'm fairly certain that if Cook County is doing it this way, um, we're not an outlier and this will be fine.
If I could just respond, it's not, it's not that our language is identical to the Cook County, but it's consistent. So I don't want to pretend that it's the very same. And, and maybe Sarah would like to speak.
Sarah Flax, Community Development Director. Um, I can read the Cook County portion and you can see the difference because it does not say the lease term shall be extended. It reads, "If the landlord fails to give required written notice, the tenant may remain in the dwelling unit for up to one hundred and twenty days." They have a longer period of time, but it does not say the lease term shall be extended. So that was why Councilmember Revel was saying that would make it that much more consistent with Cook County. And there isn't the question of whether or not the lease is extended, but the terms that the people, the terms and conditions of the tenancy shall be the same as they were during the last month of the tenancy. So that is the change.
So at this time, the second has been withdrawn, so the motion is, to amend has been withdrawn. There's no one else requesting to speak. So there is not an motion to amend the ordinance on the table. Uh, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and ordinance fifty-two dash oh dash twenty-four is passed. Thanks, this brings us now to item FB one. Uh, would someone care to make a motion on item FB one? We're past that, but you could make a motion on item FB one if you wanted to.
You were not.
All right. Is there a motion on item FB one?
I'll move item.
I'll move item FB one, review of the twenty twenty-three Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Second. Councilmember Nusma moves, uh, removes to accept and place on file the review, the two thousand twenty-three Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Councilmember Hatakakis seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
Um, thank you. So I think we should all consider the points that, um, President Mortel of the Fire Pension Board has brought to our attention. To me, or at least I need some explanation, there are certainly numbers that are drastically inaccurate throughout the audit based on the use of IMRF numbers from twenty twenty-two. Um, the numbers were available to our auditor, um, as early as March twenty-seventh, um, the Gatsby report. And they should have been incorporated into the audit, and they certainly can now. Um, these numbers are so far off, um, on many, many pages, and where totals are added up with twenty-three totals, um, incorporating twenty-two numbers from IMRF. Um, there are not footnotes on these pages. There's one footnote on one page, but many of the pages, I counted seventeen in total, have totals that if one were looking at them would have no clue that they need to adjust it and go figure out what the new twenty twenty-three IMRF numbers are in order to know what the real, the real numbers are in our, in our audit. So I, I don't, you know, this is, I guess you call it a, um, you know, material misstatement, and I, and we shouldn't be approving this. It can be revised. I don't know what the issue would be with saying, we approved this as a draft and to bring it back with the twenty twenty-three IMF numbers incorporated. Um, our liability, it's about a nine million dollar difference between twenty-two and twenty-three, and that's not reflected here. It's many millions of dollars that this is off. So I, I don't know how we can accept this, knowing that our numbers are drastically incorrect. I, and again, the numbers were available.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the auditor is here and also the, uh, the, uh, Ms. Rikis, the Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee is online. So I would like to ask each of them to, uh, weigh in to address these issues, and then I have some further comments.
Does the auditor want to go first, Ms. Trotter, and then I can follow up, or you want me to go first?
Good evening. Thank you. I can, I can address those questions. Uh, in, so my understanding, and I've, I've received, uh, I understand the question regarding the presentation of the IMRF information from twenty twenty-two. So, um, to give a little background, IMRF is a separate entity that has its own audit. And its fiscal year coincides with the city's fiscal year. It has a calendar fiscal year end. The, in order for us to be able to include the financial information from IMRF and the actuarial valuations from IMRF, we must wait for IMRF's audit to be completed and the related reporting, the actuarial valuations, the, uh, census data attestation reports, all of those must be finalized in order to incorporate the current fiscal year information. So although, um, as was pointed out, some of the information became available in March. Uh, in IMRF's twenty twenty-three audit did not become finalized until the end of May, and the information was released the first week of June. The city has made a choice historically to present IMRF a year behind for that reason, as it could potentially result in a delay in the issuance of the city's financial statements if there is a year in which this has occurred in the past where IMRF information is not available, uh, within six months of fiscal year end, or if it comes out, say, like at the end of, of June. So our audit and our audit opinion is on the numbers as presented in the financial statements, which, as is noted in the financial statements, the IMRF information is reflected as the twenty twenty-two data. So I think the term material misstatement is being misused in this case. Our audit opinion is on the balances as reported, and it is acceptable to report the IMRF information at twenty twenty-two as is disclosed in the financial statements, and as is the city's choice to do so. It is not our choice to present the information. It is, it has been the city's choice. We audit that report as is listed in our auditor's opinion. So I think there, uh, in regards to the question of there being a material misstatement, if you read the independent auditor's report, that discloses our opinion on the audited balances. And I think hopefully I've addressed a little bit to the timing of, of why the city does choose to use and report the previous year IMRF data as opposed to, uh, waiting for the current year data to be finalized and issued final.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Trotter. This is Sheri Rikis, Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee. Um, I used to have your job, Ms. Trotter. I was an auditor at Arthur Andersen. So, um, I just kind of wanted to remind everyone and bring everyone back that the purpose of the auditor is an independent opinion on the financials of the city. And the audit is supposed to be really arms-length so that the staff, council, residents do not get involved in it, to remain independent. Um, I kind of feel it's not our job to audit what the auditors have done. Our job is, I know Hattash has gone through the numbers and made sure that everything works. Through the, um, audit, we receive no exceptions, and I believe, Ms. Trotter, it's a blue ribbon award we received. So, um, congratulations to Hattash and the staff. We got a very good audit. Um, I do want to thank Hattash, Jack, um, Martha, and Claire because there was a lot of good dialogue, and I always welcome dialogue. There were thirty-plus emails regarding the audit since it was approved at the Finance Committee. Um, many, many questions were asked and all of them were answered. Uh, there, the one that remains that, um, Mr. Mortel brought up and Councilman Kelly brought up was the IMRF. And I spent a lot of time, um, talking with Ms. Trotter and Hattash. Just to reiterate, um, the audit, the get, first Gatsby audit came was three twenty-nine. That is not a final audit. The final one was five thirty-one, which was available the first week of June. Um, I went back. The city has always reported the IMRF on twenty twenty-two. I know there's a big, it appears to be a big difference, but the IRF is a huge pension plan. And the, there's pros and cons of everything. If we want the twenty twenty-three, we could risk a delay. I have always felt that I rely on our experts and our auditor with staff have made a decision years ago that we're gonna use twenty twenty-two. And as Ms. Trotter says, we are able to use twenty twenty-two on our audit. Eleven other communities that have the same fiscal year we do are also using twenty-two, twenty twenty-two IMR, IMRF. But, um, this is up to the council. If the council feels that we want twenty twenty-three in the future, we want to restate this audit, I think we can do that, Ms. Trotter. Um, is that correct? We could restate it if we have to. Or if we want to make a motion going forward to twenty twenty-three, just knowing there's a risk that the audit may not be done, uh, on time. So that's what I wanted to say, um, about it. Again, I appreciate everyone's work. There was a lot of up and back in emails that weren't about this, but, um, I'll leave it up to the council deciding if they are comfortable with twenty twenty-two or want to use twenty twenty-three.
Thanks, Ms. Rikis. This is Councilmember Nusma. I just want to clarify, do you, as Chair of the, um, Finance and Budget Committee, see any reason not to accept and place on file this auditor's report?
I'm comfortable this year, um, you know, to present it, but if, again, the council would rather have twenty twenty-three, I don't, uh, Ms. Trotter or maybe Hattash, what is the disadvantage of having twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-three? I'm not quite sure what that disadvantage is to us, considering we don't manage the IMRF. That's, you know, we, we have jurisdiction over the police and the fire. So what would be our disadvantage, Ms. Trotter?
Uh, so as I, can you still hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, so the disadvantage and the reason the city years ago determined to report a year behind is just when the city's audit is able to be finalized. If IMRF for any reason has delays in when their current fiscal year numbers are issued final, it could result in delays in when the city's financial statements are then able to be finalized, as we would have to wait and hold the city's audit until IMRF's audit is approved and finalized. And there's also, uh, secondarily, a risk that we are working with balances that are preliminary during the audit. And if there's any restatement from those preliminary balances to the final issued IMRF balances, that we would have to re, redo work, uh, calculations and testing. And, uh, that just related to those potential delays is that there could be drafts of the financial statements issued with initial numbers that are then later, uh, revised and result in just delays in when the city's audit can be issued, which is why certain communities do choose to report IMRF a year back just to avoid any risk that their, their financial statements might be issued with a delay.
And in your opinion, um, I know.
Excuse me. Thank, thank you both. Thank you both. I'm gonna reclaim the, uh, the, the floor here. I have a question, uh, for staff. Um, are we doing anything differently with this report than we did in previous years?
Good evening, Mayor, the City Council. Um, no, this is what we have done for the last many years.
How many? Three, four, five?
I mean, at least I checked last six, seven years.
Okay.
Where we are always a year behind.
Are we the only community who does it this way and takes the last year?
I think she mentioned Arlington Heights, Palatine, Half Manistit, Mount Prospect, Aurora, Buffalo Grove, Danos Grove, Batavia. I mean, we just checked few and we found at least ten to twelve communities, they do it.
So I think this whole line of question is really much ado about nothing. It's, it was, if this was a serious problem, we should have brought it up six years ago. It was not a problem then. It's not a problem now.
And it could be longer. I'm just saying it because I checked last six years. Yeah. I think it's been a long, yeah.
I, I, I think the level of discourse is really, uh, in the level of kind of suspicion and cynicism here is unwarranted. Uh, it's unfounded and frankly counterproductive, you know, to spend, uh, or require staff to spend all the, all the time that they have spent, you know, to address these concerns, um, is, really does us discredit as a city. Yeah, I think the allegation here is that our auditor has done something wrong. Come on, we're better than this. So I, I want to thank the auditor, and I want to thank staff for your professionalism and, and skill in navigating through this process. Uh, I think the points that we should be making to the community, and the community should take away from this discussion, is not that there's something wrong, but in fact, that we're doing a really good job. Our pension funding is on track. Uh, our tax levy is, doesn't always feel like it, but it's fairly low compared to other communities. Our credit rating is solid. The services we provide for our community, uh, are top-notch, like above and beyond extraordinary. And we're doing this in a fiscally responsible way. Could we do better? Of course. There's always ways we could improve and always ways, uh, we could do better. But you don't get the certificate of achievement that we've gotten if you're just doing the average, right? I looked at the, uh, at the website for the Government Finance Officers Association and the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting that we get. It's a forty-eight-page checklist that you have, somebody has to go through, somebody does go through before we get that award. So, you know, I want to make it clear to this council, every single member of the council and our community, that our staff is doing a really good job, and we're actually in quite good financial shape, given, uh, the nature of Evanston as a community. So I'm ready to approve this and move on. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Initially, my question, I think I would represent a lot of Evanstonians and just asking, what? What, what are we talking about exactly? But before I actually ask that real question about what and really trying to get to the bottom of this, I do want to say to Councilmember Nusma, I, I, I think there's a way to, I don't consider it impossible that there is something structurally wrong with how audits are conducted in municipal.
Government and the way that municipal government, you know, uh, structures its budgets and the way that we report stuff. So I don't think, I think there's a way that people can both be doing really great at their job as it is described today and not doing anything wrong. But the system which they're working under is deeply flawed. So I, I, I'm not saying that it is. I don't know. And so that brings me to my question, what? So Claire?
What is? I'd be happy to.
Yeah. Briefly, if you can.
Yeah. So I mean, this was brought to my attention to others by, you know, Mr. Mortel, and I, you know, I have an obligation to respond. It's my fiduciary responsibility. And I know in the audit, it says that, you know, for example, it says that the most recent information available, and this was presented to us, this audit on June twenty-seventh, was the twenty-two IMRF. Now, there's a couple of problems. One, it was available, the Gatsby report on March.
Just to, I'm sorry, uh, cause I really just want to get to the heart of it.
Okay. The heart of it is that if you look on, I could give you seventeen pages throughout the audit.
Really just what was done that was wrong?
So.
That you believe is.
For the twenty twenty-three audit, we have twenty twenty-two IMRF numbers that are intercalated. Like, for example, you'll have a run of list without any footnote. So when you see the total for twenty-three, for example, if you go to page eighteen and you look at the total, that total's really off. That's not really what stated as year ended thirty-one twenty. That's not really what stated as year ended thirty-one twenty-three. That's got the wrong numbers in it. I could go on page nineteen, the same thing. So you have these numbers inserted when we could have the accurate numbers for twenty-three where we stood with IMRF. Those numbers, this is what I am understanding, those numbers were in fact available. There's a Gatsby report that comes out with those numbers at the end of March. Those numbers are going to be far more, and those numbers don't change. And then the final audit on, at the end of May. Now, why? So it means that we're mis, we're, we're giving, I mean, we're supposed to be accurate, right? Accounting and, and I'm sorry that other communities are doing this. I also know maybe, I would like to ask Ms. Trotter.
Hold on.
One question.
Councilmember Reed has the floor.
I'm claiming my time here. But is there anything else before you have questions?
That, from what I understand, these numbers are erroneous in our budget based on using numbers that there's no footnote saying, oh, parentheses, this number will really change because it's a twenty-two number, like mixed in with fifteen other numbers from twenty-three. You'll have a twenty-two number for the IMRF. These are millions and millions and millions of dollars. These aren't just.
Councilmember Reed has the floor.
Yeah, and so the harm that you're saying is just transparency that we're not.
It's misrepresenting the budget for the twenty-three.
Changing, other than transparency, it's not fundamentally changing the way you think that we operate?
Yeah, no, it's not anything about, I just, this was brought to my attentions and I think we should be accurate.
Councilmember Reed has the floor.
Hattash, or maybe this is to Hattash first and then our auditor. But, okay, so is Councilmember Kelly correct that we have two thousand and twenty-two IMRF numbers in the placeholder?
And we just always reported like that for the last many years, a year behind as you.
Why, why don't we report the more updated numbers?
I mean, we could report that, but because of the potential delay, and that is what happened, I think, a few years back when IMRF numbers were changed at the last minute and that could have caused the delay. So that's why for many years, city has decided, and as I said, Arlington Heights, Buffalo Grove, Palatine, there are like tens of communities who use the previous year so that the city's audit is not delayed. Or what happens is there is a potential other, which I think the auditor said, that if we start banking on their numbers as of March twenty-ninth and the auditors and the staff prepare a lot of footnotes in IMRF, what if there is a change by the time the audit, IMRF audit comes up finalized in June? And if there are changes, then we will have to do the whole redo of almost like a lot of footnotes and a lot of financial related to the IMRF. So to avoid that and at the same time to present it and do it on time by the June thirtieth deadline, we always kept a year behind. Like last year, we reported twenty-one, year before we reported twenty-two, you know, likewise.
Thank you. So Councilmember Kelly, if there's just a footnote that said, hey, this is two thousand and twenty-two or?
But there isn't. There is one little place, but throughout it, you have totals without any footnotes.
Yeah, so.
So those, but, but I also.
Councilmember Reed has the floor.
I'm responding to.
Well, I'm going to reclaim my time because I just was kind of asking a yes or no question there. Let's add a footnote, I guess. Oh, there is a footnote. You know, if, so there seems to be a footnote there. I hear the argument on, you know, potentially not using the two thousand and twenty-three numbers, but it, you know, it's obviously more up to date. It's a year more up to date. And if there is a footnote that just explained, hey, these numbers could shift. I mean, if we can use numbers that are a year behind, I, I don't see the harm in using numbers that are a few months old and putting a footnote that says, hey, these numbers could shift a little bit between now and then. Again, if the council member isn't saying that there's a huge.
No, what I'm saying.
Hold on.
Councilmember Reed has the floor.
From what I've heard, there isn't, and I guess, let me ask you this, Hattash, this is my final question. Do you think there is an operational concern to using these numbers from two thousand and twenty-two? Is there, I know it's not influencing the way I.
Not at all. I mean, we have done it and even this was raised like when I was talking to the rating agency since we issued the bond, you know? And they know that too. So it's not that, okay, we are hiding, it's audit, it's there, it is filed at the thing called Municipal Securities Rule Board or the EMR. Yeah, so, I mean, everybody's aware, I discussed that and so.
Sure.
And as I said, like a lot of other communities, well-known, well-run, I think probably Arlington Heights, Buffalo Grove, Palatine, Half Manistert, they do use it and for these simple reasons, you know?
Thank you. I don't like to compare Evanston to any city really, but, okay, yeah. I, I, one, I appreciate Mr. Martel and for being such a sleuth here and really paying attention to the details. I think it is appropriate for us to ask these questions. I think, you know, we, you know, have an under, I have a better understanding of why we use the numbers. So I think all of this is in order. But I think that's about all we're going to get from this. So I'll close there and happy to support this and thank you to staff and thank you to the auditor. At some point, I'd also like to do a dive into, you know, maybe what's just not flawed about the, the entity and specificity, but the system overall, which I'm sure there are plenty of things that we could improve systemically, both here locally and statewide on, on these principles of accounting. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
We recently had a discussion in Finance and Budget Committee, discussion regarding budgeting for CIP projects. We were provided two options. The first option was continue with the current method of budgeting the full amount for projects in the current fiscal year. The city council can use an approved budget when approving contracts, but it will continue to result in over-budgeting for large projects that span multiple fiscal years. Under this scenario, a five million dollar project spanning two fiscal years would have the full budget show in year one. The project would finish four million under budget in year one and on budget in year two. How long have we been doing that for? Probably the same amount of time or longer, right?
Yeah, many years, yeah.
So I just want you all to understand that. So the option two that we were presented in Finance and Budget Committee, which I think we unanimously supported, was an option where only budget the amount that is likely to be expended for a project in a given fiscal year. And so to me, and again, it's unfortunate sometimes the way these discussions are introduced to council. I don't, I don't think they need to be this contentious, but it is a good exercise. It, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but it's a similar exercise in my mind. Is there a better way to do something to look at, you know, to, you know, to, is there another way to present the, the, the numbers that we get from these financial reports? And to me, that's the question. And so using what I just used as an example, and I actually want to read this last part because this is important. It says, this will result in more accurate budgeting, but the city council may have concerns when approaching contracts without seeing the full approved budget for that project in a given fiscal year's budget. So we went with option two, but we understood that, you know, there's some, there's some, there could be some consequences of that decision and we waited and we still decided to unanimously, unanimously, I believe, to go with option two. So using that as, as an example, Hattash, is there a reason why we should, you know, change the way we do this that has a benefit, you know, to council, to the community when they're trying to understand these financial reports? And if the answer is no, then that communicates, that communicates everything that I need to know. So what is your? If we went with what Councilmember Kelly is proposing, similar to how we went with option two when it came to CIP budgeting, is, is there any, is it worth doing it? Is it, will, will it, you know, provide us clear, more straightforward financial reports? So there's really not much to gain from it?
Right, I mean, so if I understand correctly, if you're talking about changing the IMRF reporting going forward, is that the way, are you talking about, or you focused on CIP?
Yeah, it sounds like we're, we would, in, in Councilmember Kelly's scenario, and I don't, I'm not completely, I don't think, following all this, but it sounds like we would be waiting on IMRF numbers.
Right.
And what I'm saying is, aside from what other communities are doing, is there any benefit to doing that?
The benefit is just to complete our thing on time and we don't have to redo, as I said earlier, if the IMRF.
That's the benefit of continuing on with what we're currently doing. I'm saying, is there a benefit to waiting to get the IMRF numbers? Do you see any benefit to that?
I mean, it's a little bit on and off, you know? And when you see the, like, throw big numbers like, say, five million or ten million, it's nothing. The IMRF is almost, I think, forty-five billion dollar fund, you know? So yes, and again, if the city council fills and we can kind of discuss finance budget that, yeah, next year, when we do the audit, include the current year, yeah. Even if it might be a week delays or ten days delay, once the IMRF is audited, then only we start the process. But it could potentially delay and sometimes it is hard for, like if we go to the GFOR for some extension after June thirtieth, sometimes they disallow that, the state comptroller's office disallow that. So there are some kind of concerns like that, yeah.
So when you say delay it, because that was actually my next question, I think you answered it, is what, what deadline are we trying to meet?
June thirtieth is the deadline.
We're trying to submit the audit to?
June thirtieth to the state.
To the state, okay. And you're saying we will, we'll be routinely late in doing that, perhaps?
If the IMRF is, audit is delayed or there are changes in the IMRF preliminary report, which comes out in March end or April, and if they are changed at the time, because IMRF actual number comes out, say, in March end, like this time it came out in March twenty-ninth. When the auditors do their audit, these are the actual prepared numbers. They are not audited yet by the IMRF auditor. When the auditors work on that, say, in May and, or first week of June, and they find that, oh, there are some changes. Now, obviously, we have to redo the whole footnotes if we have started working in April based on the March number. So it's a lot of, yeah, kind of work and duplication and that could delay our audit too. So yes, it is up to the city council. I'm not against including the current year, but I think the Martha covered well, what are the potential, you know? Consequences, yes.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
This time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to second opportunities. Councilmember Kelly with three and a quarter minutes left.
Thank you. And I just, I want to make sure that, I know Mr. Mortel left, but one of his big concerns is that in the audit, it says that at that time, and, you know, this was presented on June twenty-seventh, that the most recent information available for the IMRF was that of two thousand and twenty-two, which it wasn't, right? So even that statement alone is wrong because we all know now, we've stated here that at the end of May, there was an audited version of the March twenty-seventh. So I, you know, I just want to make that clear. I mean, I appreciate his, you know, deep dive and meticulousness going over this, but in here, it says that's all that was available and this is June twenty-seventh and it wasn't. He, we had access to the IMRF two thousand and twenty-three. It does throw everything off. It's like a sixty million dollar difference. I mean, so just in terms of presenting accurate, when you look at and you want to, if somebody, you know, was really wanting to get into our budget and audit, numbers are going to all be way off on many, many pages because we chose, because, well, anyway. A question to why it says that was the most recent information available, when clearly twenty-three was available. I also know that Sickage did like Naperville and others and they put in the twenty-three numbers, like for Naperville. Maybe Ms. Trotter can respond to that. I mean, I know those are incorporated and they're on the same timetable in terms of the audit and the, the Gatsby report. So, right, I mean, the numbers were available at the time.
The, in terms of which numbers are reported, it's not our decision. This is a decision each entity makes on its own and then we audit what's decided. We don't make a decision on what numbers are presented. That's not our role, we're independent. So we report, we provide our opinion based on the.
The direction you.
Of the entity that we're auditing. And there's no, either practice is acceptable. So the city has, as we've noted, made the call to use prior year data to avoid any potential risks.
Thank you. Okay, so, so the city directed you to use the twenty-two numbers, but whose statement is it saying that that was the most recent available? Is that your statement or is that the city's when it says?
A lot of the documentation within the audit is prescribed. So footnote disclosures, there's prescribed formats for that.
Okay. I guess that's an issue too, that Mr., I mean, it was available, but there's a, so it was available, but there's a, and so that's a, I don't know what you want to call it, I don't want to use the wrong term, I'm just saying that that would be inaccurate information in our audit.
It is.
Mayor Biss, can I just add one thing and this is sharing again? What if we just put the IMRF current audit on our website? So if anyone does want to see the numbers, we can have it there and reference that in the audit.
That's certainly something we could do. There's still no one asking to speak for the first time, so continuing with second opportunities. Councilmember Newsma with a minute forty-five left.
I was just going to call the question if there's nobody else wanting to talk.
I just want to say something real quick. I call the question.
Well, then that defeats what you just said.
Councilmember Newsma calls the question, council member wins second. I think what happens now, and I always get this wrong, is this is non-debatable, but the motion is on whether the question is called. So now we're voting on whether to vote. Okay, so will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to call the question?
Councilmember Haddadis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye. No.
Councilmember Burns?
I can't rely on this dude.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Ruffordin? Councilmember Reville?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
With three voting in favor and five voting against, the motion does not carry. Continuing with second opportunities with a minute, ten seconds left, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. We should make a habit of voting no to calling the question unless it's necessary. I don't think this one was, but I, I'll say that, because I think there's something we can get, gain from this. And, you know, Chair Rikus is here. And, you know, I think it's worth, if there are, you know, thirteen communities that staff found that do use the two thousand and twenty-two, you know, the prior year's numbers, then maybe there's fifteen or twenty that do use the most recent year's number. And it even seems from the response that we got from our auditor that they have worked with communities that have used, you know, the, the current year's numbers. And if it just means that we're a bit more transparent and we're a bit more accurate in our projections and forecasting, then let's be a bit more accurate in, in that work. And so it encourages us to, you know, kind of, Councilmember Burns's point earlier about how we made a decision on another issue, maybe take this to Finance and Budget for hopefully like a one-time discussion, brief discussion. Do you understand some of the complexities about actually getting the audit done by the deadline? I heard Hattash mention that there's extensions that the state could grant.
Councilmember?
My time is up? Okay, I'll, I'll end here. But, but I, so I will, I don't think a motion is in.
I think what's in order is maybe like a phone call to the Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee to suggest a discussion item on the next agenda.
Chair, I, I, this is my phone call to you. Thank you. Bye.
Continuing with second opportunity, since, since no one wants to speak for the first time, Councilmember Burns with a minute twenty-five left.
That was all I was going to say is if, if we could discuss this, a future Finance and Budget Committee meeting and similar to how the other example that I laid out was presented, this could be presented in a similar way, pros and cons. Here's a timeline of how things may change. You know, I think that'd be worthwhile.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first or second time, so we go for a third opportunity to Councilmember Kelly with a minute ten left.
Thank you. I just, I'm looking at the footnote and the footnote really only refers to one single page and, and the numbers on that page. So I'm just saying that, that the rest of the, the totals throughout are not footnoted. This doesn't refer to the entire audit. So anyway, so I think we do have totals that are not accurate for two thousand and twenty-three throughout and it also stated in here that the numbers were not available when in fact they were available. I just, I think it would be the right thing to do just to bring it back revised and, and, and vote on this as a draft.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak. Before we call the roll, I'm going to just use my own privilege to say a few words. I actually think it's genuinely outrageous that we're having this conversation. This is a really unimportant question. It's really not important. It's a judgment call. We could report the previous years as we do to be cautious about delays or we could report the current year as some other communities do to be extra vigilant about up to the minute accuracy and less cautious about delays. to be extra vigilant about up-to-the-minute accuracy and less cautious about delays. And if the Finance and Budget Committee wants to talk that over and make a change, that's fine. It doesn't matter either way, because either approach is a reasonable and straightforward and transparent and honest way to report. And the implication that exists in many of the emails that all of us up here have received, including from people who serve on city boards and commissions, that there is mistakes or misleading information or errors in here is wrong, itself misleading, and paints a really dangerous picture. And I guess, I just, I just want to say that I think the, um, the movement to comb through these documents carefully is being done in service of something I care really deeply about, which is accountability. But this conversation that we're having is an anti-accountability conversation, because we're spending this time obsessively splitting hairs about nothing, instead of actually talking about what the city could do better on a substantive level. And I would just urge everybody to train their attention, particularly those who want to push for more accountability on real stuff that matters, not chasing ghosts. Will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Win? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferdin? Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and the 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report is accepted and placed on file. I'm sorry, I forgot to say one more thing. I want to, I want to thank Chair Rikus and Ms. Trotter for making themselves available so late and for working so diligently through these many topics. It's, I know that this task can be thankless. Councilmember Reed on item CC1.
Oh, that's not what I was going to do, but I will gladly make that motion as well. I'll move item CC1, Evanston Compensation Committee Report and Recommendation Regarding Elected Official Compensation. This is, so this is a bit confusing. It says for action to accept and place on file, but we're just, our vote tonight won't literally accept this and make it the new law of this small six square mile.
That's exactly right, Councilmember, that's why I'm the one who pulled this off the agenda. And the reason is, I feel like staff in shaping a budget, as they're now really in the thick of doing, need some guidance from us. And just voting to accept and place on file just says, hey, yo, this exists. And I think instead, we need to give some staff some guidance. Do they want to build these compensation levels into the budget? Is the, will the council something different? Just do, do we know yet? So that's why I pulled this off the agenda for discussion.
So move it, certainly, to accept and place on file.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves to accept and place on file the report from the Compensation Committee. Councilmember Newsma seconds, Councilmember Reed followed by Burns.
Thank you. One, the only, again, I, yeah, I think the only folks here who are not staff members are, and are media, are two folks from the Compensation Committee. I believe our Chair and Ms. Lockhart, who is also on the committee. So one, thank you for sticking around, and thank you for the work that you all did. I actually did not follow the work that you did at all, and apologies for that. But I know a lot of my colleagues participated in conversations with you all. I made a referral on changing the compensation for council members a while ago. I think this is a discussion that Evanston and really suburban municipalities across our nation have to have. Our, I think, out of the reporting or out of the conversations, a number of folks expressed that if you're doing the job, and if you are living up to what I believe the expectation of residents are, and if you're living up to what should be the expectation for folks who are tasked with guiding a $400 million annual organization with well over 100, I mean, we have 78,000 constituents that live within our city, but we have well over 100,000 constituents when you think about all the folks who worked and, you know, interact with our city. So that's a lot of, it's a lot of weight for folks to have to bear. And if we, and we live in the world as it is today, and, you know, folks have to balance, you know, raising children, childcare, work with, with, with being able to do this, this job. And I've long thought that we have to create a compensation structure for all of our elected officials that ensures that, yes, of course, the person who's retired and at the end of their career is able to do this, but also that the single mother or father who is a renter or, you know, just getting established also can participate in their democracy in a meaningful way at the top as a, as a council member, or the mayor, or the city clerk. And I feel that the compensation that has existed previously has not gotten us there. I appreciate this committee's work, and I think certainly the recommendations, they push us forward, which some groups have not. I still don't know if it's there, and what I think, you know, at a basic level, I don't think anyone would expect to, an Evanston council member to be compensated like a Chicago council member at $117,000 plus a year, plus staff. But certainly, and compensation is only a small, you know, I think reform that we need to provide more support and professionalize our council. I think, you know, staff is certainly a part of it and other aid. But I do think this is a good first step. I think, you know, looking at the, I think council members and any elected official deserves, you know, that is tasked with what we are tasked with and who should have the expectation to do it to the best of their ability should be compensated at least a living wage. I don't think $20,000 is quite there yet for a council member. I don't think $32,000 is quite there yet for the mayor. And I can say $81,000 is getting there for a city clerk, but maybe not even there for the, especially what the office is taking on now. But certainly in the best position. So, you know, I'm certainly excited to look at this further. I think as, as we look at this, we should also be looking at compensation for committee members and commission members as well. And I think all of that needs to go into the budget. You know, maybe there's a per diem, not quite what Springfield folks got, but, you know, a much smaller, reasonable, again, you're not traveling from across the state, you're traveling somewhere within the six mile radius. Yes, so my time is up, so I'll leave it there, and we can accept and place this on file. But I do think sooner than later, a discussion about compensation for both council members, the mayor, the clerk, and for our committee members should come back to this body. And I'll just end here, and I think the compensation between council members and the mayor should be a bit closer, because, not that your job is any easier than ours, but, you know, there's, there's, I think it should be a bit closer. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns followed by Newsma.
I too did not participate at all in, in the committee discussion. I wanted to see where the recommendations ended up. What I've said consistently about this, though, is, is if we want to continue to attract and elect the same type of leaders in this community, this is how to do it. And I think it's a fine adjustment if that's our goal. What we'll continue to see overwhelmingly is people who are either independently wealthy, retired, or have flexible work schedules. I'm in that last category. You're going to continue to see that time and time again. I think this is, and some people have done it, but I would say even them lawyers, they, they were partners, and so they had some flexibility there. You know, unless it's a living wage, I think we're going to struggle, always struggle to, to, you know, to find leaders outside of those, of that group. And that's just the bottom line. And if that's what we want, then we should continue to do things in the way that we've, we've always done them. I would love to see some flexibility at some point in this. Again, I doubt this council is willing to explore this, but for people who want to, who want to dedicate more of their time towards it, that there's a higher amount if you commit to working it full-time, or however we would define that, then you can receive, you know, you can receive a different income than if you say, look, maybe my ward doesn't require that, or I don't need it personally, and maybe I'll take the lower amount. There's so many things that I can point to. It's almost really difficult for me to fully describe. I'm going to have to in the, in the next several months. But how many things would not have happened if I did not over, like if I didn't get involved in the way that I did? When, when, when our landlord and tenant mediation fails, like they, people say, I can't get to them, or they didn't call me back, or they looked to us to get involved, to advocate. I can't count how many times that I have personally had to get involved in tenant and landlord disputes, and they hold me accountable for that. Like whether it's, whether, if, if, if our landlord and tenant contract, if that doesn't work, they blame me, and if I get involved and I'm unsuccessful, they blame me. But this idea that our constituents expects us to just come up here, every council, vote on things, and go home is just not the reality anymore in Evanston. They, they really demand more of this council than maybe they did previous councils. So that's one thing that, that, that wouldn't, we would not have reached a resolution in so many situations, just looking at tenant and landlord. And there's issues that go far beyond that, but just looking at tenant and landlord, if I did not get personally involved, we would not have reached a resolution in many of the situations that I've encountered. Jackson and Emerson would not have happened. And, and that's not to say that staff wouldn't have other affordable housing proposals that would happen at some point, but Jackson and Emerson would not have happened when it did if I didn't get involved. That took many months of me forging a relationship with a property owner that honestly didn't like the city. In fact, they had, I think her husband, who had passed, had sued the city. Wouldn't have happened. Brown Avenue wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for the Here to State Committee. It's not even a city committee. I was told that because we don't want to, you know, we have too many committees to make it an unofficial committee, which, which while Sarah and I appreciate her participates in the committee as best she can, because it's not an official committee, most of that work falls to me. I'm managing three different working groups from an unofficial Here to State Committee that has produced quite a bit, more, most recently, the proposal on Brown that I, that was unanimously accepted, accepted by this body, and I appreciate. But if I could add up all the hours it took to get to that proposal, you would understand where I'm coming from. That wouldn't have happened when it did if it wasn't for my leadership. And I'm, I'm saying me, because I was the one that did it. But I think this would be true no matter who was in this seat, if they wanted to take these things on. Youth shoemaking workshop, like I heard during the campaign that people wanted to see more for, for older youth, that we have things for younger youth, but we need more for high school, middle school students. And so I developed with the, with the funding from our Parks and Rec Department in Northwestern, a youth shoemaking workshop, where they learned traditional shoemaking techniques, customized a pair of Air Force Ones, and came up with their own shoe collection. I, 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 I got funding from the city, but I organized all of that myself, including a showcase in the end of it all. Again, none of this would have happened, and I got other examples. Staff does not have the time to manage their day-to-day responsibilities, so this is not on them. Plus, take on what I always say, special project. They just don't have the time. We have no, no staff because of the recommend, proposal I just made, and I'm wrapping up. Chair, I appreciate you, your flexibility on this. But because of our, the motion I made to give us like virtual executive systems, we have something, but I use most of that just to schedule meetings. That's how many meetings, it requires so many meetings to make all of that work that I just said, and there's probably 10 other things I've also done, pathways to wellness, like, I, all, all that person is honestly doing is scheduling for me, that's it. Because that in and of itself takes up countless hours to do. My, my point is, is that you will not, you will not get any of that unless somebody has a flexible work schedule, is independently wealthy, or there was one other that I forgot, and retired. You just, I don't know how you, I don't know how you do that with a nine to five. And so, again, I'll just close with saying, if, if, if this is what we want, this is what we'll continue to get.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to understand the procedure here. And first of all, thank you to the members of the Compensation Committee for meeting and doing the work. I was happy to participate in the interview process. I think the committee acknowledges and understands the workload that Councilmember Burns has so eloquently elaborated. It's not just Councilmember Burns, it's, it's many, if not all of us here. But procedurally, what's our way forward here? The Compensation Committee has made a recommendation. According to Rule 26 of the City Council Rules, I'll read it here. The council then approves and sets all compensation via ordinance following submission of the Compensation Committee's report. So does that mean we can put an ordinance in place that gives us an even bigger raise? We could do that, or we could accept a lower raise, or no raise, or a pay cut. It's totally up to us at this point, the Compensation Committee has weighed in.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Newsma. Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council, Alex Raggy Corporation Council. That's correct. So I believe that this item was here for discussion to give staff direction on what that ordinance would say, and it will come back to the City Council likely. I don't know if we have exact direction at this moment, but it could read exactly what the Compensation Committee suggested, but it could be open for amendment via the City Council. It just has to be passed a certain amount of time before the new consultant is seated.
Right, so we're providing feedback on the ordinance. I'm not sure if we've given staff anything actionable yet in our discussion, so I will attempt to do that. I think it's a no-brainer that the clerk's salary should be increased. You know, that's a full-time job, it should be paid accordingly. It makes sense to give the mayor a little bit of a bump, you know, considering the time and energy. Any mayor, not just the current one, puts into the job. Looking at the council member's salary, is, hey, $4,000 more for me? Like, I like that personally. Is that going to make a difference to people who are, you know, who's going to do, consider doing the job? Is that $4,000 enough? You know, that's probably enough for me to pay my parking tickets in the city. So I guess I take it, but it's not going to, it's not going to fundamentally change anything, which is the, the point that Councilmember Burns is making, so.
Is it going to change how often you park legally?
I cannot get my act together to keep track of when street cleaning is. Totally on me. Our, our traffic enforcement department does a very good job. Let me just give them that credit. So I guess my, my suggestion is to direct staff to prepare an ordinance that reflects the recommendations of the Compensation Committee.
I think, yeah, so I mean, I would say a few things. First of all, you know, I, when I talked to all of the applicants before appointing them, I told them this job was important, kind of complicated, and a little bit thankless. And I think you really threw yourselves into it in a wonderful way, and I appreciate the dedication and the seriousness. I, when you interviewed me, it was really clear that you're taking the questions very seriously and really trying to be as methodical and thorough as you could. So I just really appreciate the time and the effort. And I would, if you're willing, I would love for you to come forward and just make any comments that you'd care to make to accompany the recommendation.
I'm willing, not necessarily eager. It's clear to, it was clear to us that the, that the work of this council is more complicated than virtually any other than the city of Chicago. That said, with our recommendations, the council and the mayor will be compensated more highly than most of the other surrounding municipalities, and that did weigh up. And that did weigh on our recommendation, um, as I presume it will on your, on your action. The, uh, the, the compensation has been frozen for eight years. So, uh, the increase that, that we are suggesting is, from one respect, large, 26%. But from another, if you look at it on an annual basis, it's rather modest. We certainly did worry about whether the compensation was too low so that it would not attract as broader range of candidates as we would obviously want. But we also got input suggesting that some council members, um, are not working as hard as others. And, you know, then the question arises, well, how would you, uh, judge how one might get more and another less? One suggestion we had was to count the number of committees, uh, that people are serving on. But, but anyway, that, that's really all I wanted to say. And, and those were some of the things, as I think our report reflects, that, that weighed on us as we were making our recommendations.
Well, I wanna thank both, both of you again, and the other three members of the committee as well. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the dedication you gave to this, this task. I would concur, I would, I would say that I think we should, given that there wasn't some strong consensus to, to the contrary, I would ask that staff prepare an ordinance that reflects the recommendation of the Compensation Committee. I think in light of the very first thing that happened on this meeting, the articulation from the clerk about the, uh, petition circulation, uh, periods, I would ask that that be ready for introduction, uh, at our August meeting uh, because people are deciding whether or not to run right now. They're sort of late, frankly, if they're deciding now. And so the, to the extent that this is an input into that decision, we better do it as quickly as we can. And I'll say personally, I, I wouldn't, well, uh, we'll get, there may be more discussion of potential amendments. I think I personally will be, you know, cautious about being willing to support significant increases to the mayoral salary. But we can, we can cross that, uh, bridge when we get there. So just again, I wanna thank you, thank you guys for the, the time and the dedication and the, and the work product. Would the clerk please take the role again on the motion to accept and place on file? And then the ordinance that actually effectuates this would be before us at our next meeting.
Councilmember Hara Gudis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the recommendation is accepted and placed on file. This brings us to call of the wards, Councilmember Hara Gudis.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Kelly.
I'd like to report a Northwestern, um, Northwestern meeting regarding Ryan Field and Lakeside Stadium update to address concerns around the truck route and the, um, tailgating events and the extended hours. That's tomorrow night, um, and you can register online on the city calendar. Thank you.
Councilmember Winn.
Yes, third ward office hours are Thursday morning at Brothers Cave from 7:30 to 9:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, question for Councilmember Kelly. If you could remind me the date we set for the neighborhood meeting for the Legacy Horizon Project. Well, she's looking that up, thank you. I, uh, I just wanna say no ward meeting or office hours in the fourth ward for the month of August. I do wanna make sure everyone is aware and invited to Downtown Summer Sounds uh, every Thursday, uh, this summer, continuing, uh, next week on the 25th, uh, with Adia Do. And this is presented in partnership with the Evanston Divine Nine, which is a group of African-American fraternities and sororities. Fun event, uh, last week, the week before, thousands, uh, of people, hundreds if not thousand or more people coming down to enjoy downtown Evanston. Super fun time, everyone is welcome. And I am now gonna say August 7th is the date for a neighborhood meeting to hear the latest proposal, uh, from the developers who are proposing the Legacy Horizon Project. This is on Chicago Avenue across from Whole Foods. Uh, it's in Councilmember Kelly's ward, uh, so she and I are kinda co-hosting a neighborhood meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, just continuing on, I wish the, our members from the Conversation Committee were here. I, I just wanted to make it clear, especially for our media this year, is I think our Conversation Committee did their job and they did it well. This is a very difficult thing to figure out, especially because of the size of our, our city. Because other cities of similar size, I don't think are nearly as active as Evanston is. And so it puts us in a really difficult position where we're trying to figure out the appropriate compensation for the size of our city. But I don't think we always do a good job of also overlaying that with the amount of activity that we have in Evanston. And maybe a, a future Conversation Committee can figure that out. I think part of what they started to look at was the correct direction and maybe the next Conversation Committee can pick up. You can look at, uh, um, how active someone is on boards, committees and commissions. And then would also say, cause I don't, I think, I don't think we've done a good job of figuring out how to incorporate this. So we keep falling back to what we're used to. Equity is not equal, period. And so we keep saying like, oh, but we couldn't figure out how to make everybody, maybe everybody shouldn't be equal. Maybe it should be based on something else that's, that's, that's important, you know, to making sure that everybody has what they need to carry out the work that they're responsible for carrying out. And so, but I appreciate their willingness to, at the very least, explore some of those ideas. And again, I hope future Conversation Committees will, uh, will take it up. And less advocating for myself, cause again, I can make it work. I was at, I, you know, I was, I was out at, at, uh, James Park today. I was able to pop in, see my son at, at, uh, summer camp when other people had to work. But I could do that because I do have flexibility in my work schedule. So I'm not really advocating for myself as much as other people out there who, you know, if they were to, to do this and do it well, they would need it to be closer to a living wage to do it. And I think we should allow for that option, uh, at some point. Fifth ward meeting, uh, as always, last Thursday of the month, uh, and that is all. Newsletter going out soon.
Councilmember Sufferden. Councilmember Revel.
No report.
Councilmember Reed.
Eighth ward meeting this month has been canceled, although there is a community meeting that we're having the day before that is open to the community, but we'll be discussing a specific neighborhood issue. Uh, we will be back in August. And, and I'm, I'm gonna be very quick here. Our country has had enough assaults on here, so I'm not gonna talk too much. But I, I, I do think when we look at, earlier we discussed the Comprehensive Financial Report and the mayor made some statements. And, and I just, you know, this is for staff, this is for all of us. And I really, at some point, wanna have a answer to this. But if, if I'm making a decision on, as a council member, as a community member, on pension funding, what document do I look to to determine what the current level of funding? Of, of, you know, what our current contribution and what the current funding level is? If it's not the Comprehensive Financial Report and its audited numbers, I'm just curious what document I should be looking at, um, to make those judgments and, and to make other judgments. Is this document meaningless? Is it a pointless exercise that we just engage in? Or is there some meaning to this document? And is there insight that is meant to be gained from this document? And if there is insight and if it is meaningful, and it's not just a pointless exercise, then it should necessarily follow that the information contained within being as accurate and as up to date as possible is also meaningful. And also means that, um, you know, folks are making decisions from a more grounded, accurate, up-to-date place. And so I, I just, I can't accept unless someone has something different for me, uh, that it's just that this whole act, the exercise that we went through earlier was, uh, pointless and almost insulting, um, because it has to mean something. So, thank you.
A quick reminder that there's no council meeting on the second Monday of August. So we'll see everybody on August 26th. And with that, saying nothing further to come before us, the July 22nd meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned.